Welcome to the Village of Cottage Grow Village Board of Trustees meeting on Monday, July 21st, 2025. This is a hybrid meeting, both on Zoom and in person at Village Hall. It is 6:30, so I'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. So we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this is the Public Appearances section, the public's opportunity to speak. We welcome your input and appreciate the community's engagement. This is your opportunity to share comments, questions, and concerns with the board. However, it's the only time during the meeting set aside for public comments and not a forum for dialogue or debate. All comments will be noted and where appropriate, follow-up may be provided by village staff or the chairperson, which is myself, at a later time. We ask that you please state your name, your address, and then you're allotted up to three minutes to give your comments. We will start with individuals who have submitted the wish to speak form and are here in person. After those have been heard, we'll open up the floor to anyone else who'd like to give comments, and then followed by speakers joining us via Zoom. So we do have one wish to speak form. Anthony, we all received your wish to speak form, and would you like to come up and give public comment? Just make sure that you hit the little talking guy.
Does that work? All right, perfect. Is there a timer?
I'll just use my brain.
Give me thirty-three minutes and forty seconds, because I gave up forty seconds last time. All serious, all kidding aside. Good evening. First and foremost, thanks for being here, not on economy, but because it's part of your duty, right, to be a part of this program and have this discussion. I sent all of you in the request to speak form what I had spoken, my information I shared last week, or two weeks ago at the Planning Commission. Nothing has changed from my position as far as the impact it'll have on the community, the impact it'll have on my family, the impact it'll have on the value of my home, the impact it'll have on the community as a good thing, right, for what it could do and all those kinds of things. I do have a couple more concerns that I want to make sure that I do share. As I was driving in that area, both over to Oakstone, back out and around, and then back down Gaston Road towards my property, both of those intersections are four-way stops with no outlet in sight, short of going towards the residential area, which is south as you go towards that. So both of those four-way stops would be extremely congested when they did have events, when they did have parking concerns, when they did have things from that perspective. So it's going to cost something to the tune of roundabout money, probably to make that make sense. And I'm not sure if anybody's thought about that, or if that's been discussed. But again, I, as a concerned citizen, based on the spend and the things that may have to go into retrofitting that entire area to make this work, that's another thing I didn't consider in my previous communication. But I do want to anchor on the thought process that, as a residential property, with residential properties surrounding the facility, I've spoken to and had the chance to speak to directly my neighbors across, but also down the way. And there isn't a single person on that road that was here from the Planning Commission time and here now today that doesn't sit squarely on this will truly affect not only our daily activities, our daily life, but also the impact to us and the value of our properties and what we can do from that perspective. Now, I'm under the impression that I understand that it's not the village's responsibility to take that into consideration, but truly, as a member of this community, I think it's extremely important that it's at least understood, and it's at least heard, and that there are reasonable, thought-provoking questions with regards to that. Okay? So I appreciate the time, I appreciate the sentiment, my feelings that I felt at the Planning Commission haven't changed with regards to the project. I do think that this is probably a great thing for the community, and it makes sense. I would like the opportunity, and my fellow community would like the opportunity, to give ourselves the opportunity to allow that to be that, rather than jump in the middle and have residential co-mingled with what this sports complex will be. The Creed Sport Complex makes sense. I'll say it again. It makes sense, right, for the community, for what you guys are doing. It doesn't make sense for a residential property in close proximity. Doesn't matter the berm, doesn't matter the fifty-foot wall, doesn't matter any of that, right? The thought process still remains. To have my residents and multiple residents in such close proximity, to me, is probably an issue. And I would vocalize and verbalize that along with the traffic concerns, along with the light pollution, along with the noise, along with the increase in potential crime, right, in our community. I think about EMS, fire, police officers having to report to a scene or get to traffic or get to places. If there are a boatload of people that are coming in and out of there in the midst of an accident, they're, oh, I'm sorry, I hate three minutes, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, okay.
You can finish your thought.
I see that as a potential issue that needs to be addressed for and therefore taken care of to support this community. Again, I think a sports complex makes sense, just not with my house on the touching all three walls. But also, when it comes to the stoppage, the signs, the postings, the traffic flow, all of those things that will affect Summit, will affect Oakstone, will affect Steel, will affect Valley Atlantis Foods, will affect all of those businesses and communities that are surrounding there. I also, I'm going to go a little over, but I was talking to local businesses like Dolphin Swim Academy, like Oakstone, like Summit, and people of the like, and they share my similar concerns and have been pillars for this community since they've given a chance to be where they are. So this is a big concern for a lot of people, not just the one lonely guy here saying hi from Gaston Road. So obviously, no questions, comments for me, because that's not allowed, but if I'm here, if you need anything.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to give comments? Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, we will move on to discuss and consider the minutes from the Village Board meeting on July 7th, 2025. Those minutes are linked in the agenda as a PDF.
I'd move approval of the minutes as presented.
I have two modifications.
Do you want a second, and then?
I'll second, and then see. Could we add to eight G that I presented on a public safety impact fee, just add that line? And then nine I under the library, it should say "they approved." Right now, it says "the approved."
There's a motion by Murphy and a second by Severson.
Yeah, good with those changes.
Okay, thank you.
Me too.
Two modifications.
Yeah, I have another one.
So under the, let's see here, the new business, it was the vote on the capital prioritization. I lost connection, so that should be five zero zero, not six zero zero.
You okay with that third modification?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion?
Abstained, I abstained.
Motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business. First, to discuss and consider requests from Madison United Rugby to waive special event fees. There are two links in the agenda, one with the notes from last time, including the park fees, and the second is the invoice. I'm not sure I'm clear on what the, if it's a full wave of all fees. I don't know if Brad's online. Okay, maybe Brad, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having me again. I think maybe for the third time. I appreciate you spending the time you have, especially on last meeting as well. Yeah, my request, you know, we've essentially jumped from, and I know this is a new process, and I'm very understanding, and in certain ways, I do support this process existing with a fee. I'm very conscious of resources and Parks and Rec and things like that. I guess this question, or this request pertains to sort of the mid-year approval, and, you know, I'll take partial responsibility for not getting this in early in the year so that all of our events were scheduled. But, you know, we've essentially gone from paying, I believe it's one seventy-five or a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a pavilion rental, which Parks and Rec, which we've had no problem paying for when we've had large events, just to mitigate some of the crossover and congestion. But we've gone from that amount to, you know, which is equated to maybe fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a year, to, you know, what probably will end up being about five thousand dollars for us this year. So I would just request some leeway this year because it has jumped on us. In future years, you know, starting next year, I see a complete value in it, like it's a cost that I can actually move forward to some of our renters and people that are partaking in the events. This year is just a little late for me to do that. So as a longstanding nonprofit that's been, you know, very involved with the development of the park and things like that, I guess I would just make my request that there would be a little bit of flexibility in 2024, or 2025, excuse me.
When you say flexibility, are you talking about waiving all of the fees with the exception of the park permit?
That would be my first request, yes.
A question for Sean. The different rentals for like the pickleball courts and such, that's kind of added new, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if we were to waive fees, it's those things that we have kind of added on that... Oh, in the right column? Oh, I see. Wow, okay. All right, well, that makes a difference. Thank you.
Well, that's a question I have. So I look at the invoice, and it shows a total of three thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars, of which a thousand dollars is a refundable security deposit. So I'm seeing two thousand nine seventy-five. I don't see how, how you're coming up or arriving at five thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, I might be a little high in that, but I think we'll have some recurring fees from the first half of the year that will be added on to that. And I would have to go back and get a final number on that. But I think we probably have at least four or five dates that we've, we've already rented that we'll, you know, we'll have to also pay forward on that. Yeah, one thousand is a refundable line item on that? Okay. Yeah, I must, I actually missed that part. So, yeah, that helps, obviously. But, yeah, we do have some fees that we'll tack on from pavilion rentals earlier in the year.
Comments from board members?
So would it be fair, then, to leave the security deposit, because that's refundable, and leave the shelter rentals, and then just waive the Class One event permit per event? Is that what we're thinking?
I would.
That's what the request would?
It'd be appreciated, yeah.
I mean, I'm good with that.
So is this invoice an all-in for the scheduled dates and the dates that have already happened, or is this a, I just don't know if I got a full picture here.
Yes, it's for all in. It's for the seven events that were on the permit.
Okay, so it's twenty, so with the refundable, it's twenty-nine seventy-five. Are there other services that are, we need to recover? Police, EMS, anything else?
EMS is separate, but we do have the added traffic barricades installation.
And what is the cost of that? We talked about that before as the overflow parking. What cost is the village going to incur with that particular overflow?
Yeah, and that would be something that I would think is a fair, you know, we're going to try that out in the next three weeks, and I think that that's a completely fair. You know, I'm very conscious of Tom, you know, Sean's team and resource, and, you know, I saw the signs that he put together today, and I thought it was fantastic, so.
Pete, we haven't, we haven't put any cost in there yet for that service, and not sure whether we will. We'll evaluate after the next three events.
Yeah, you know, I think, like Chris had said, the Bakken Shelter, the rental certainly takes it away from the community. I think we should leave that in there. The three hundred dollars per day for the Class One events, I could see waiving that, but I would want to make sure that we capture all the other incidental costs that the village incurs and once that's put together.
There is a separate, you know, this might not be parking barricades, but there is a different barricade fee. It's up to six for thirty-five dollars if we charge the seven events at thirty-five dollars, since we'll be doing the, or I don't know how many events we're doing the overflow parking, but three, so three at thirty-five dollars to recover that. It's line three, Class One event, Class Two event, barricades, up to six.
Up to six, thirty-five dollars each.
Yeah, those aren't the same.
Not the same barricades.
They're not the same barricades, no.
You know, I'd be comfortable with waiving the Class One event fee per day in light of, you know, the partnership we've got. But I think we need to recover the cost of the shelter rental, because obviously, our residents can no longer rent it if it's being used. So I think we need to recover that. And then I think we just need to have Sean or Chief put together what the costs are going to be for parking or any other incidentals that aren't laid out here for those events, and then we move forward. That would be my recommendation.
Go ahead.
I would move your recommendation.
And I'll second. And I don't, I don't think I would need to approve unless there was some dispute between, like, I'm fine with staff figuring out what that price is and letting, letting the rugby know. Like, I don't, I don't think I need to approve that cost again.
It sounds negligible in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, yeah, I'm comfortable. I'm very comfortable with that as well.
Okay, so there's a motion by Severson and a second by Murphy to partially waive the fees as discussed. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Everyone, yep.
Yeah, thanks for being on, Brad. Move on to unfinished business B. Discuss and consider a facilities needs assessment for a possible public safety impact fee. Paula?
So I requested that we just carry this forward to keep the conversation moving. And I wanted to let you know that I took many of your questions and kind of did some research. So I met with the Village of McFarland Community Economic Development Director and their fire chief and had a great conversation. And I really probed, because I asked, like, for instance, you know, did they find that their public safety impact fee slowed development? And the answer to that was no. So that was one of the questions that came up. Heidi, you had, you know, mentioned about, like, after the police station is done. So what McFarland actually did was they did not institute the fee until they had the final cost after the construction was done, because they want to base, they wanted to base it on that final cost, plus factor in, for instance, if they got any tax credits for their sustainability things. So they waited until it's done. So it's possible that we could also wait until the police station is done as well. And he also, one of the neat things is, he talked about how with affordable housing, you can choose to exempt different factors or different impact fees for an affordable housing complex. So let's say, you know, for one, you want to, and correct me if this is wrong, Rick, because I see you looking at me, but that you could like, you could say, kind of like how we waived some of the fees, you could waive that for an affordable housing project. I also went in the Public Safety Center to meet with Chief Dennis, loved their layout. And so he kind of talked about their design process and different things that happened there, and how he's, he was part of kind of helping them come to that safety impact fee as well. So I just wanted to let you know that I've been working on those things. I know that Erin and Cameron were reaching out as well and compiling kind of the list of municipalities. So I'm hoping that at some point, we can still have the conversation about when we move forward with a facilities needs assessment. And then the other aspect of it, when we get to the fire and EMS RFP, is making sure that we write that in such a way so that that would also kind of double-dip and, and fill that facilities needs assessment for the future. So I just wanted to give an update on those two things.
I have a question, Paula, if you can clarify. So I noticed in the last information that you presented that, you know, for a single-family home, average was like maybe twenty-one hundred, and multi-family homes, which you addressed. But we could, our board could decide what, how much we would want to assign those fees, correct?
Yes, yes. And I think when Erin and Cameron are collecting the data, you'll see that kind of each municipality does it differently, and they can set different rates for, you know, a single-family residential versus high density, so.
I've got a question, Paula. So how is it established? So we got the police station we're going to build, right? Then down the road, at some point, there's probably an EMS or a fire improvement. So is that, when you said we could wait till the police station is done, is it more of a fund that's used towards these facilities, or is it a recovery of a, of an expenditure that's made?
So I know that you dropped off during that part of the presentation. No, that's okay. So the first thing we need to do, and this is required by state statute, is to do a facilities needs assessment. So that's kind of the first, you know, step in any of this, before we even kind of go down the road of setting fees or anything like that. So our first step would really be a facilities needs analysis for the police station, because that's our current project in front of us. And I think that, you know, Cameron had mentioned at the last meeting, he estimated that that would be probably fifteen thousand dollars, and it would be something you do with Baker Tilly. Oh, that was the other update. Cameron mentioned that Ellers is going to kind of include a public safety impact fee when they look at our water and sewer for the fall. But that wouldn't suffice for state statute and the facilities needs assessment. So we would have to do that official assessment before we even go down the path. I would think that we have a lot of information already at our disposal that led us to the, you know, design of the police station, but I'm not Baker Tilly, so I'm not exactly sure what they would need. But we would need to look for funding to do that and either get that this fall or put it in the 2026 budget. You know, it would be good to have the wheels moving before we start construction on the police station.
Any more other discussion on this item?
I think, so we have other impact fees being studied that haven't been updated since, like, the nineties, I think, for water and sewer. And we have park impact fees. So, you know, we're like, I feel like we have this, like, fine print, like, going on top of new construction a lot, like with tariffs. And so, like, I just want to make sure we view it with the lens of, you know, because if this applies to commercial development too, like, would that halt or, like, slow down, you know, commercial development, which we really want to make sure that we incentivize to help, you know, broaden the tax base? So, you know, it's basically adding another tax. So I think it's important that we look at, like, our whole picture altogether. So I'd, I'd like to have all these other pieces, and then, like, the housing chapters being updated. So, you know, I think part of that is also looking at all these fees and, like, make sure we look at the whole picture of, like, cost of development in the village. So I think it's definitely, and then, of course, once the projects are built, they're taxpayers too, so then they're paying a tax on it also. So just, I want to make sure that we have, like, the whole picture vision of, like, how much it costs to build in the village.
And that's where I think Cameron said, you know, Ellers is going to put it kind of as part of that scope. Just to clarify, though, it is not a tax. It's kind of the cost of bringing new development into the village. And I think, you know, we talk about water, sewer, parks, but we don't call those taxes. So I would like to, you know, make sure that we make that delineation between the two.
I appreciate that you investigated McFarland and had a conversation with them, and it, it solidifies a bit more that they stated that this has not slowed down their growth of their community.
Any other discussion on this topic? You do have it as a discuss and consider, the facility needs assessments. I feel like maybe we are a little waiting on a couple more pieces of information before moving ahead with a formal state statute legal requirement of a, of a study that's going to cost, and I don't know if that is more, maybe a little more direction for staff to continue working on this and then work it into the budgets for 2026.
I didn't realize Cameron wasn't going to be here tonight. So that would, that's part of my, but it, I think, you know, the staff already had the direction from the last meeting to collect the data and information. So again, I think we just kind of keep talking about it and keep it moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, if everyone's okay, we'll move on to the next.
I'm kind of confused, because is that, oh, that's item C, the attachment, there wasn't an attachment for that conversation. Okay.
There was no attachment for that conversation.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Yep. So we can move on to item C, which is discuss and consider the study to update the fire and EMS organizational analyses. So there is an attachment for that one, which is the draft RFP. That's linked in the agenda. So in essence, this RFP is to kind of bring the two studies that were done in 2022, fire and EMS that were done independently, kind of merge them together. And it does, the way it's organized, it kind of gives, we're asking to revise or kind of re, take a look at what has already been done and make sure there's no updates that are needed. And then it is, kind of the focus would be on analyzing facility improvement plans, potential, you know, growth over ten years of where a second station, if needed, when that needs to be, what the timeline looks like, what the triggers are to make changes within the organization. And I do have in there, review the feasibility and potential value of implementing a public safety impact fee, if we can, you know, again, use this as a tool to kind of gather more information. This is also the, on the agenda for the town tonight. I think to move this forward, we could approve this scope and then have direct staff to release it. If, and then we should probably have a conversation too. The way it's written and the conversations that we've had are both town and village collaborating on this. If the town chooses not to move forward, I think the Village Board could still give direction to move forward with this study. I'll open it up for discussion.
Can I just ask, Rick, is the way the RFP worded, would that suffice for state statute for the facilities?
Yeah, so the, with these types of services, we aren't, there's really no, like, state requirements for us to follow, because services are exempt from public bidding requirements. So because it's not, like, an actual construction project or capital improvement project, there's really not state statutes that guide us, so, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't make myself clear.
Okay.
Would this suffice for the facility needs assessment in, in terms of the safety impact fee? Sorry.
Yes. I would have to give that some more thought. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I guess I would have some concern that the, you know, firms that maybe were doing, you know, the work and bringing these studies together and evaluating, maybe wouldn't have the expertise to also do impact fee analysis.
They would probably, they would, they would probably hire a subcontractor, like Ellers or Baker Tilly or someone else. But probably the firms that would do this, I shouldn't, I mean, there, there, there's some that are more generalized, that do all sorts of things. So, but, you know, some of the other ones that maybe are more specialized in the organizational studies and not, you know, not those reviews may not be, but, yeah, they could certainly reach out and have a subcontractor work on it.
Yeah, my initial response or thought would be, it likely wouldn't suffice for doing that, just because they're, they're fairly specialized reports that I know Ellers and Baker Tilly, they do a lot of those types of analyses for their, for designing impact fees. So my initial thought is probably not, but it's something that we could potentially include.
And I guess the way this is, I wouldn't, we'd probably want to change how this is worded if we want that as a deliverable.
Yeah, because it is a little confusing. It says, review the feasibility and potential value of implementing a public safety impact fee. I'm not quite sure what the tangible deliverable is on that one.
So I think part of the impact fee, and you're much more well-versed in this, is that it's, there's something that it is going to be going towards. And so if we're doing a fire EMS timeline, revisiting the scope, and we have a station established, like, maybe they could give feedback on what the fees incurred over the next, because it's, there's a time period too that has to be used within, so seven or eight years or something. It's a weird number.
It has to be used within eight or ten years, depending on the type of project. So we try to design it so there's like a specific project that we're collecting the fee for, because if we collect the fee and then the project doesn't move forward, we have to give all that money back plus interest to the developer that we charged it to.
I think putting in, in this plan allows for when they kind of tackle the funding of how we fund these services. So if you looked at the WPPI study that they did for Sun Prairie, there was kind of a section about public safety impact fees within that scope, right, just generally. So I think that's why we include that language in this, because we want to see, is it, you know, a viable option. But I think you're right. I think we would need a separate study, but I think at least some of the groundwork we do with this should help save costs in the future.
You know, I guess my question was, so the public, public safety impact fee goes towards capital or doesn't go towards any operating expenses, right?
Exactly.
So I guess my question, as I look at this, it can be used. It kind of, unless it suffices as that study, I lean towards pulling it out because it just adds scope to something that's not going to deliver what we need in the end to actually take it to the next level. It's my thought.
Other thoughts? I don't, I don't think it hurts to leave it in at this point.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I lean towards taking it out and, and moving forward with the study. You know, we've, we've done other things for fifteen thousand dollars and I don't want to go back in the agenda, but we can leave it in. If the group wants to leave it in, we can leave it in and we can revisit the study as a follow-up.
Let's have a conversation then too about funding of the study if the town chooses not to participate in it. We do have the, the funding allocation for, that would most likely be, the funding formula is what I envision moving forward, cost sharing the study. If the town chooses not to participate, is the village board on board with moving forward with the study regardless?
I am. I mean, I think, aren't we talking about putting in the 2026 budget? So I think we have to. I think the former PPA studies kind of showed that the need of a second station was really coming from the village anyway. So I think it all makes sense and I'm willing to do that.
I would agree with that. We've been having these discussions for the past couple of months with the town. And I don't think delaying it is going to be of much use.
So essentially, we're discussing considering taking this RFP out for bid, right? The funding piece and all that's going to follow based on the outcome, right?
Yes.
So I think right now it's, you know, I make a motion that we go forward and, and issue this RFP for executing this analysis.
All right. There's a motion by Doll and a second by Murphy. Any more discussion on this?
Just a couple of comments for clarification and discussion about timeframe. So when, it sounds like we're looking to do this next year. When would you like us to obtain the proposals? And what would you like to do for, do you want staff to narrow it down to a top two and have them come in to interview? What, what are we looking to do?
Yep. I think that-
And then how does that work if the, you know, with, how do we want to work on that with the town and the chiefs and everybody?
So I had reached out and gotten, I know Chief Lang gave us a list of firms that he would either be interested in seeing or have worked with the village town before on these types of things. So I would, my suggestion would be to, at least if we're going to target, target that list. I don't think that there were anything major missing off of that list. I think we, yeah, should start it in 2026. I would leave it up to staff's expertise to know how much lead time they need in order to get it out and get it back. And I think we would, probably wouldn't want to see more than two firms come in. And if we're going to interview them, I think two is appropriate. Other thoughts?
It looks like if the proposals are being sent to, you know, the group listed on the last page, you know, getting feedback from them on which to, you know, we might want to interview at the end.
And if the town chooses to participate, we could do a joint.
But your question on timing, it says, please submit proposal by email no later than a certain date. We'd want them as soon as we can. So it'll feed into the budget cycle. So I mean, I don't know what's typical, but I would take what's typical at a couple weeks, whether it's four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks. But we should definitely make sure we populate a date when we issue the RFP.
Is that enough direction, Matt? Okay. There was a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We'll move on to discuss and consider park improvements agreement with the Miracle League. There are three attachments in the agenda. So one is the agreement and then two are my rambling memos, per usual. I, we'll kick it over to Rick to talk about the agreement first and if there's any thing that we should discuss there.
So based on the direction we got, we put together an agreement that governs not only the donation that the village will be making to Miracle League for this new park project, but also sort of the design and implementation of the construction. So I guess first of all, to clarify, it would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand donation to Miracle League for purposes of this park. It's a non-refundable donation, but it can only be used for this specific purpose. The Miracle League would be responsible for the, the design, the purchasing, entering into all the contracts with, for the park project itself. So they're responsible to raise all the other money that's needed for it. Basically there's, they can't start the work until we've verified that they've got their finances to actually implement it. They do have to follow public bidding laws, which we've provided them some assistance on that process because the village is contributing some funds to it. And then with the village, basically, we do have final like input on the design and we, I put a provision in there, basically also specifically calling out the plaques of the former donors. So that's incorporated into the design. And basically, they're going to hold us harmless for like any damage that's sent to the property. So we've added all the protections that we feel that are necessary for the project itself. So, and we'll get a final inspection before we actually like accept it and they have to correct any defects. So it's basically following our standard requirements for developers when they're doing public infrastructure improvements. But the fact is, we're making a donation. So it somewhat complicates things. So Miracle League has signed off on the agreement. One thing that they did mention was, I think there may have been some like crosswires on what their request was. So the agreement is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar donation from the village. They, I don't know if they originally requested a hundred and fifty thousand, but that's what their request is, is for a hundred and fifty thousand. Just wanted to mention that because that's what they requested. And obviously they're here tonight so they can speak more to that. But otherwise, I think the agreement covers all of the facets of the project for the village and the donation itself.
I have a question, Rick. So we have previously agreed to use the Amazon funds for this and that's not specified in this agreement. So can you speak to that?
We don't have to specify the source of the funds for our agreement with Miracle League. That's more of a budgeting accounting thing for the village to determine where the funds are coming from. But the funds are already in the village's account for Amazon. We've got the clearance to use those funds from Amazon.
So you have confirmed, we have the funds from Amazon?
I believe Cameron has received them.
Yes, he has. And so my memo in here, and I don't want to use donor names in open session. And I know that in May, I think it's been months since we've talked about this, but in May we had, had the discussion about using donated funds to the, up to the hundred and fifty thousand, which is then what the Miracle League is requesting. And so I think that this is, as an anchor gift, like I absolutely understand capital campaigns and how they work. And I think that it's really important that we show village support moving forward in order to be successful with the entire project. And I think that the donor funds that would be used are within the scope of what the donors' intents and wishes were and honors that. And so I would recommend making the hundred and fifty thousand donation.
I had another question here. So in looking at the agreement under seven, the village obligations, this was kind of new to me, that the village should be responsible for removing the currently existing playground equipment. So that, that was kind of new to me. And I don't know, do we know what the cost of that is?
So I think Sean has done a bit of research on it. He sent out a, there was an email with several attachments on it with some memos that also had, this had come up, this was a couple of weeks ago. Maybe Sean can just speak a little bit to that.
Sure. Where did the feedback come from? We, either we do it in-house with staff or we can, we can hire somebody to come in and could, it would take probably about a week just to harvest everything that we needed and then be able to reuse that stuff for several different other purchase or purposes. So we're, I'm going to ask for a budget amount of like thirty-five thousand to get that removed. I don't, I don't expect that it'll use up that entire thirty-five thousand, but in order to harvest everything and do it quickly.
So does it make more sense for the general contractor who's going to do the job, just move this obligation to Miracle League, donate the full hundred and fifty thousand dollars as we had discussed two meetings ago versus us? Is there any reason why we would do it?
Just to make sure that it was harvested correctly. Most contractors will want to just throw that away or they're going to upcharge for that. So we want to, we want to get everything separated and, and be able to reuse it again.
Go ahead, Paula.
So Sean and I met and did some brainstorming and, you know, he talked about in his like memo, like picnic tables, different things like that. Did you ever get a chance to look at the option of allowing community members to have pieces?
We talked about that and I'm not quite sure how that would all unfold. It'd be kind of a little bit of a feeding frenzy, I think, down there and not knowing exactly what's savable and what's not at this point. So we feel our, the safest way and the best way is to just try and recycle and reuse it in, with, on other park projects.
Inga, do you think you could resend the email with those attachments just so it goes up to everybody's inbox? Any other discussion on this item?
My thought process would be to do one twenty-five as in the agreement and then leave twenty-five thousand because we're going to have staff time tied up in that. And I know we talked about rebuilding picnic tables and different things. You know, there might be disposal costs for whatever we can't use, plus the re-installation of like the teeter totter and such, like in other parks. So I feel like we should have some of that for that youth.
I would agree with that because when we initially began discussing this, the general consensus was not to go over a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And so I feel like we should use the additional costs that weren't considered at that time towards taking it apart.
Yeah, I'm in the same camp in the sense that when we originally talked about this and we said, we'll just use the entire hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation that we had received for youth development, we would use that entire funds. I didn't realize, maybe it was my mistake, that the village was going to take the responsibility for removal of the equipment.
So I'm going to put my Cameron hat on and I'm going to assume that the twenty-five thousand that we're talking about now is not youth development targeted if we're talking about a staff time removing equipment.
But the end goal, the project itself is. So when you begin with the end in mind, the work that's being done furthers the cause to achieve the end result.
I, I was going to say something similar, but you beat me to the punch. So I agree with that.
Other comments?
Pete, you're not, you're not wrong. The scope kind of shifted a little bit from when we originally, originally started talking. We were, we kind of went a one eighty and decided we were going to save what was there. So that initial cost was not included in the, in the project.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. I, I thought maybe I missed it. So I, I guess I would, I would move, make a motion to approve the contract as is with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with the village taking on the liability of removing the equipment and salvaging what's there. And it sounds like it's, it may actually cost more than the balance, but I think that's certainly fair and we can move forward with the agreement as is. So that's my motion.
I would second that motion.
Motion by Doll and a second by Benzo. Any other discussion on this?
I guess I just have a little bit of concern about using, I know, I, I understand with the end in mind, but maybe it would be more appropriate to take from Park Development Fund, although I, you know, I, you know, because we're reinstalling in other parks. So, you know, or if there's excess costs of reinstalling outside of that twenty-five thousand, that, you know, maybe we propose to take that from Park Development Fund. So I, I guess that's just where it gets a little messy for me. Although I, you know, if this is how we get this project moving forward, then, you know, then we can, you know, go ahead. But I'm just a little like using donor funds to do that. I'd prefer to take from Park Development Fund. It would still be no tax impact for that additional moving pieces cost, but.
Who's got the final say on whether or not something is youth development related?
So I'm not legal answer here, but we could ask Amazon just to make sure that the, I guess, we're still meeting their intent. I mean, if the approval tonight is for one twenty-five, we can work out the accounting of it after the fact because that's not, I mean, it's a consideration of whether you move forward, but it's not a provision we would add into the agreement and how we account for it internally.
I'm just wondering, I don't want to get overly complicated, but is there a way to approve one twenty-five on the condition of that being a, a use for that money? And if not, we can up it to one fifty? I think there's no question in my mind, and again, I don't want to speak for you, Rick, but the removal of the playground equipment is part of the project, right? So if that only costs ten thousand, I would be fine donating the remainder of that twenty-five thousand dollars towards the project. But I think in terms of where we were at, what we agreed to, right? It was, we said we'd up it to one fifty and it was an all-in. And like Sean said, the scope changed. So now we're talking about the village is going to take that on. So I think the way this agreement's written right now, we can approve it. We can get with Cameron and make sure that we account for the demo of the park as it is and any balance of the funds we can, we can donate. That's, that's what I would suggest.
So the motion was for, to approve the agreement as is and then, which would be the hundred and twenty-five, which was the original ask from the Miracle League. And I think that then next year, when you have your full capital campaign that's been done and we're ready to move forward with the project, to come back to the village board and request additional funds, or if we decide as a village board, we have other work to do in that park that supports the mission of, and donor wishes, then we move forward that way. But the motion tonight is for the one twenty-five and to approve the agreement as written. Any more discussion on it? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Is there enough direction on that item for staff and Miracle? Okay. Just want to make sure that we have-
Do you want us to reach out to Amazon again?
No.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to new business, which is the first one, discuss and consider the special event permit application from Abiding Shepherd Lutheran Church. This is linked in the agenda. It's the Holy Hustle permit with comments and fees. There were comments from EMS, from Public Works and from police. I don't believe there was any fire comments. I'll open it up for discussion.
Was there any request to waive any fees?
No. So there is some concern, I think, because there is a, maybe a little bit of, a couple of concerns that were listed there. One is that the, there's a rugby event that is occurring on the same day, but they won't be using Clark Street on their, on their race course. They turn onto Progress and then onto Bonnie. So I'm not sure I, I really see that as a major issue. There is ongoing construction though, so there will be, have to be a partial lane closure on BB. And obviously, police resources that go into making sure that the runners are safe. I don't know, Chief, if you want to speak to any of your additional concerns that were listed there. And I know construction, maybe it'll be done, maybe it won't be. We need to, it's, it's still early in the, in the process.
Truly, the impact from police department's standpoint is if the path isn't done, it's going to require police resources to shut down a lane of traffic on BB for a section of the run. And I can't reallocate staff throughout the run path because this is a five K and a ten K. So basically, they do the five K. If you're doing the ten K, you do it twice. So they're going to get spread out. So that's why the numbers have to be what they are, especially with the, the crossing at Southern Grange and West Cottage Grove Road. So last year, when they did this event, officer, we staffed it up with one officer. There were no incidents, no issues. We also had the message board signs out on Vilas Road warning about runners being on the roadway, trying to give the motoring public ads- Trying to give the motoring public heads up on that one. So that's where things are at.
Any concerns with the runners on Vilas Road?
They had no issues last year. Again, they sort of get spread out. So it'd be the same as if somebody was out for a daily run on Vilas Road.
Yeah, I think last year there were maybe 100 runners. And yeah, you are talking about on a 10K route, getting pretty spread out on two loops.
They start by going west?
They.
Starting and ending is from the church.
Yes, and going west.
They go east on West Cottage Grove Road, to Apoff, to Bonnie, to Progress, to Vilas, to Damascus, and then back in.
So you get the downhill on Damascus if you're interested in running it. But you have the uphill on Vilas.
I'd be interested, you have expertise in this, obviously. So what are your thoughts on the map, the, what they've got set up?
Yeah, and I actually, I've talked to their race director and stuff too. I think that this is, it's inappropriate routes, it's two loops, it's a relatively small race. Every rate, I, it's very rare to have roads closed down, I feel like, in races these days. Like most of them, road races are open. I've switched to the trail, I'm in the woods now. But yeah, I think that's, I think this is fine. There was, yeah, no recommendation, or no request for, for fees to be waived.
Last year was the first year they did this event. They made no requests for road closures last year. That's the same this year. And obviously they've gone through the towns process for the areas on Vilas and Damascus. They have not requested any road closures in those areas.
You do have in here a, the request for noticing the businesses and residents. That's, is that a new requirement of the village?
I think it's in the best interest of the village and the organizers to get the information out to those that are along the run route. Because it's going to have an impact on their business, especially on West Cottage Grove Road. Because if we're closing down the outside lane, the number two lane of traffic, that's going to impact people getting in and out of a couple of the businesses.
I know that the other run that's in Cottage Grove doesn't do that, but I do think it's good practice.
I would move approval of the permit application for the Holy Hustle on September 13.
I'll second the motion.
If there's a motion by Severson and a second by Buzo. Any more discussion on the special event permit for Abiding Shepherd? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Discuss and consider ordinance 10-25, read chapter 12 updates. This is Chris.
Yeah, I don't really have too much to add to the memo. It's really just getting chapter 12 in line with current practices. And thanks to Rick for putting all this together because I know it was a lot.
So yeah, basically Chris brought to our attention just that there are some ordinances in chapter 12 that aren't consistent with our actual agreements. So this updates things to be consistent with the actual practices of these various committees that we're adjusting the governing language of.
I appreciate you doing this. And as I seconded to have this on the agenda, you know, he's taken upon himself to just kind of look through this. And I know in the past, we had an ordinance review committee, my last go around on the board. And so I don't know if that's something that we should look at again, just so it shouldn't all fall to Chris to just kind of peel through. But just planting the seed for a future meeting, so.
I guess from a general process standpoint, I think we, I mean, we have professional staff and I mean, obviously legal expertise that can weigh in and do our, and bring ordinance changes to us. Do you envision more chapters?
Yeah.
You spearheading more chapters? Is it, I mean, is this something that we can, should we be giving direction to legal to be revising our code?
I, I mean, I guess I, what I, I think maybe the process could be a little different. Maybe I bring it forward to the board to see that, make sure they want to do it before we send it to Rick. Just so we don't do stuff that, don't have him work on stuff that the Village Board doesn't agree on. And not that I don't trust Rick, but I don't want to just tell the attorneys to have at it because that, that's going to be a lot of hours and.
Yeah, because I was thinking about this too. Because I think it makes sense to either bring it to the board or committee first. This one, I mean, it wasn't a policy question. It was, when Chris brought it to our attention, my meeting thought was like, yeah, we should change this ordinance for sure. Like this is something I would recommend doing regardless of who's bringing it forward. So I am, you know, whatever process the board wants to choose for, you know, future ordinance revisions, you know, it would make sense to bring it, get direction for us to engage just because there's obviously a cost with all of this. So just being cognizant of that.
And I'm trying to keep it right now to just like objective stuff that needs to be updated, not stuff that I personally don't like. So I'm not touching like zoning or anything like that. At this point.
Good to hear.
One thing that, you know, as I was on ordinance review, I was chair of ordinance review committee. It does not, it's not free to update your ordinances and of course, the legal time to work on it. So I, you know, this stuff needs to be cleaned up. But do we have, like, what's our progress on like the budgeted funds that we had for ordinances? Or do we need to like, you know, update this in 2026 with those funds that we designate for that? Like I, I don't want to like run over budget if we've already like updated a bunch of ordinances and used up that money already. So that's, I guess, one question I have. Although the concept of updating it, I agree with. And then the other, I think pretty much every ordinance, except for these like governing over other committees, could probably be sent to a certain committee because we have so many committees covering so many different things. The thing that we heard from most of the time at ordinance review committee was people that didn't want pool fences anymore. And like literally we went over that like four times and that was like the biggest thing that we talked about. So I think sending them to committees generally, I think, would work pretty well.
I think it's helpful if it goes through committees because then you have expert staff with people who are on that committee to kind of do those revisions versus a group of, what I would assume is, is it citizens that probably don't have ordinance expertise necessarily?
Yeah, and we didn't have a budget either. So then to like get legal time, we had to come back to the board anyway to update something, so.
Sounds good.
All right, this is the discuss and consider. Was there a motion in a second?
I would move approval of the updates to ordinance, chapter 12.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion by Severson and a second by Doll. Any other discussion on the chapter 12 updates?
I guess, so we have budget to make these ordinance updates? Or is that something that, well, yeah, but it costs money to.
Yeah. Do you know Lisa?
It will be the cost of the publication and then for e-code to update our online codification. So yes, there are costs, but I am sure we have money within the budget to cover this at this point.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. New business C, discuss and consider funding for public TV educational documentary featuring the village. This is Viewpoint with Dennis Quaid, Discover America, Great Places to Live, Visit and Start a Business. There is a memo in the agenda. This was another opportunity brought to the, to the village. And we have had, I know you were briefed on some initial contact that we'd had with producers. Matt and I, I feel like we were interviewed a little bit, phone interviews by these producers. And they're very interested in telling the story of the village and their educational formats. The deliverables are on page two of, of my memo. So a couple of different lengths of documentary style storytelling videos. They use a couple of different platforms. So it's not only on PBS, I think they use CNN, Fox News and a couple of other stations. They have email and websites. We get, it's five hours of onsite filming and we would have ownership and rights to use all of that content. I have, it's a $29,300 all costs commitment. I've kind of broken it down how I would envision funding this project. I have been in contact with the Cottage Grove Chamber and Tourism and they meet August 1st. And I think this is again, a short turnaround time for us to make a decision. We need the decision tonight. But they are, I think enthusiastic and excited about the project and will be willing to fund, hopefully up to 50%, 50% of the cost. I had a conversation with Inga then too of how we incorporate this because we had talked last time at the other, with the other opportunity about how to, you know, integrate this into the communication plan. So I think that we have some ideas going forward with that. They would, they need a decision tonight. We probably want to give a recommendation to staff on how to fund it. Put in a formal proposal to the tourism committee. And then obviously give our, our notice to Dennis Quaid, just kidding, to the producers. And they would be filming within 60 to 90 days and this would run for an entire year. And Matt, am I missing anything that wasn't covered in my two-page memo?
Oh, you covered it well.
Comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I appreciate the time you spent looking into this and I read, I went through their website. So I'm curious like, like how, how this came about or, or who reached out to the viewpoint? And I guess I, one thought I had when I was looking through this, this seems more like, you know, a national advertisement, Royal Caribbean, Clemson, Clemson University, Go Tigers, I think that'd be great. So to me, I don't know that spending almost $30,000 in comparing a small community with national, other national organizations which have, which are listed here?
Yep, I think they reached out to us. So we did not solicit this in any way. Yeah, the, I think the, the reach is about 60 to 90 million viewers, which is a pretty big target. When we talked to him on the phone, he had the producer kind of mentioned on how, you know, these are, we tell the story of the community, we talk about, you know, why people want to live in your community, what's special about your community, what kind of businesses are here, how your community is growing, what opportunities there are. So it's kind of, it hits the why you should move here, why you should start a business here, why you should come visit here, kind of from a tourism aspect, which I think is why I have the funding kind of all divided up into communications and to TIDS and then to, into tourism because it hits all of these aspects. I think, I don't know, I also think, you want to say something?
Renee, I had the same, well, first of all, I was kind of surprised when I got the voicemail I got. You know, at first like, is this, is this real? What is this all about? And I, I saw the same, same things as far as, you know, large universities and hospitals and things like that. But they, they may have been going through different themes at that time. This one specifically, at the top of the memo, they're, they're calling this like the, Discover America, Great Places to Live, Visit, Start a Business. So, you know, I think they're probably just trying to target, you know, communities that, that fit that. So maybe not as much looking for universities and hospitals and things like that now for, for this type of.
I mean, he did touch on the proximity to Madison and to the campus. He wanted to know about our school district and like all different aspects of life. And I think he did mention in the phone call that the, you know, the average, I think that this is like a year-long series. And then the viewers that know, that watch this are professionals that, a lot of them are professionals that have the ability to move around. And so this maybe would pique their interest and they'd want to move to Cottage Grove or move and visit the area. So I think that there's.
Yeah.
A lot that could be done with this.
So it was just interesting to me because, you know, when I read it, it's contact us. So I'm thinking as you're talking, like, how would they decide if there's a 60 to 90 million reach? How would they like reach out to Little Cottage Grove, USA? But again, I guess I'm not in favor of spending $30,000 for this. I feel like, you know, Cottage Grove is a great place and of course, we want to see our community grow. But I think we could use it in other avenues rather than focus this on a big national advertisement.
Yeah, you know, I, I appreciate all the work that was into this and that you, you met with them to talk about what this would mean. But yeah, I'll be honest with you, we're one of the fastest growing communities in, in Wisconsin. I don't see a compelling need to spend money on something like this at this time. Just my two cents.
I think to your point about why would they contact Little Cottage Grove? I think that, I mean, obviously we are growing and we are bringing new businesses and this, you know, our, I think this is a testament to all of that work that we are being contacted by. And this is the second one in the last, this summer.
I pretended to be confident and I expected they would reach out to us. Why would they not? We're the fastest growing community in the entire state.
Then we don't need to pay for the advertising, it's doing itself.
But I think that we do, we have a definite need in our, our tourism to, you know, make to support the heads and beds that, of our, you know, the hotel. And I think that we could do a better job with our, the, the way we showcase Cottage Grove and the stories that we tell about why this is a great place. And I think that actually this gives us a lot of the, kind of like the infrastructure to be able to do that. And we have that for a long time. And I think the fact that it runs for an entire year is also beneficial. I think that it hits, again, storytelling in multiple ways where it's not just focused on economic development, it's not focused just on people moving here, it's multimodal. And I think it's a, I think it's actually a really good opportunity. And I think, you know, at first, yeah, like this is, seems, and it's not necessarily advertising, it's, it's educational, informational. I think I, there are no ads on public TV. So I think that that is not the right word to use.
Well, it may not be the right words, but in a sense, I mean, yeah, it's like promoting however, what's, whatever semantics you want to use. But I think we also discussed at our last board meeting too, to maybe consider local advertise, you know, maybe there's a local company that could do it for a lot less.
So I don't think, I mean, this is not an opportunity, we're not seeking out contractors for doing different types of advertisement on behalf of the village. This is, this is the opportunity that's presented and it's different videos and footage and kind of again showcasing all of the great things about Cottage Grove. And I think it does, it would be a really good collaboration with tourism, a really good collaboration with our business community and with Chamber, but.
And we did do local just a couple of years ago. It gets hundreds of, 100 views on YouTube, so.
That's kind of the point I was going to make, the reach is, is probably not very comparable versus this versus a local. I think it's a unique opportunity and, and, and in the end, it's not a ton of money. For the money that you put in the memo, is that, would that be our portion or would that be total? And then Chamber could cover half of that?
Yep.
So our portion would be 15?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's well worth it. I mean, I'm assuming that the Chamber will be good with that and that's, and we get excess money in the tourism fund anyway. So I think it's a good idea.
And I'm not going to like rehash a lot of the things that have been said before, but I think it is, you know, an interesting opportunity to have reach that, you know, we may not be able to achieve on their, on our own. And I think it is a great collaboration with business community and showcasing the opportunities there and get reach for people that might want to locate a business in, you know, the county that has the highest quality of life in the country. It's rated high in, you know, all sorts of magazines all over. So, you know, at the same time, that's also like, well, people already know about us because we're in all these rankings. But I think it really goes to show that what we're doing is being noticed and. and we can, you know, hold our own on this, you know, stage, that this is a great place to live, start a business, and become a, you know, member of a great community. So I, I think that this would be an appropriate use of these funds to, you know, continue to develop our TIDS and support our hotel by bringing visitors in through tourism. So I would support moving forward with us if we decide to.
And then one more thing on the, we're growing anyway, so we don't need it. Because maybe this is an opportunity for some kind of unique business to come here that doesn't have a foothold anywhere else in the region. So it might draw people in that might not normally come in here. Because like, I mean, every community's got their culvers. So if we get another culver, it doesn't matter. But if it's a unique business, then maybe that'll draw people in.
Haven't spoke yet. I think I come at this from a different angle. And I don't want to necessarily call myself a subject matter expert, but being the former Chamber Director and also the Director of Regional Bi-Local Organization here in Dane County, I look at this from a different lens, I guess. So you referenced Page 11 in the communications plan. And I thank you, Inga, for sending those out. So when I look at Page 11 and I looked at the two tactics, Tactics Priority One talked about creating social media posts, showcasing the business community to help with business retention and make Cottage Grove businesses more visible, provide the Chamber updates, so on and so forth. When we did, I can't remember what year that was. We did the leakage study that was showing how much of our money was being spent on businesses in Madison. We really, that's where kind of Cottage Grove first was born out of. Yeah, and so, you know, we, we kind of spent money and, and time on that. And so, but I haven't really seen tactic number one on the village's behalf. Like, I haven't seen, like, business showcases or those kind of things. So, you know, I would love to see more on that. And then tactic priority number two talks about working with groups like the Latino Chamber of Commerce. And so I wonder, like, have we done that? You know, and what does that involvement look like? And I also think about the Black Chamber of Commerce. Because I think we haven't necessarily leveraged those organizations like we could. And, you know, for instance, Black Restaurant Week starts August 11th. And, you know, Monisha's, I think, took part in it last year. And it's a great opportunity to highlight our black-owned businesses here in the region, right? Because Monisha's is going to pull from the region. And so I think working with Camille and Dr. Amani at the Black Chamber and the Latino Chamber, like, those things are really good opportunities to build those authentic relationships. And even look at taking dollars to possibly cosponsor events, cosponsor educational opportunities. But I think, you know, and I'm happy, I know resources and staff time is limited. I'm happy to make those connections. The Veterans Chamber is another one. So I would rather see us focus on these things where we are really sticking within our region and we're getting people, you know, we even have a lot of people that come to the village and work here during the day and don't utilize our healthcare facilities or our restaurants, right? Like, and I know we tried to capture, for instance, when Summit opened their building, we tried to, we had like maps that we put in each cubicle of like a map of Cottage Grove. So people knew what was here for them when they're here during the workday. I would love to see us spend our resources on that. One last note on that page. It does say potential costs at the very bottom of the page. Print marketing materials costs vary based on project needs. So again, in referencing that page, there's nothing about video on that page. And yes, I know that is a social media tool. But I think it's, it's too big of an investment.
One last thing. I do think it's important to know that this isn't an either/or. We don't have to do this and then not do those things. We can still do those things and still do the viewpoint thing. Because those things, I think, are really good and I think we should pursue them. But I don't think that it necessarily precludes us spending $15,000 on this.
I didn't mean my, that paragraph to mean that this is how we were going to, and the only thing that we were going to do. I thought that this was an, an add to the communications plan. I think the communication plan too is more, it's a template for moving forward. And we don't have a communications director, which, if we had all the money in the world, I think I would advocate for a staff member for that, but...
So just quick with, with the communications plan, Brian from Revelation described it as more of a menu. So you can pick and choose things from that menu to implement as time allows, as staff allows, as resources allow. One thing I do want to point out with the communications plan is that this type of opportunity wasn't necessarily something that was considered. It was kind of outside of the box and not incorporated into the plan because we didn't know it was an option. So I, I just wanted to address those two points since we were talking about the communications plan.
I have one last thought here because it looks like this, we'll probably move on from this. But this is just us reacting to someone that came to the village asking if we wanted to participate in this. So separate from the communications plan, which is like the active strategy of what staff would be, you know, moving forward with, like, this is just a reaction of, you know, someone that came, approached the village. Do we want to move forward with this? I think that approaching those decisions is like a little bit different. So we want some different emphasis on the communications plan or dedicate additional resources, which is probably hiring someone either through contract or staff member. Like, that would be something that we probably have to bring forward in budget time that, you know, we want to dedicate resources to, you know, move that far, move those other communication strategies farther along because we don't have the current capacity to move some of those forward. So, and I don't know how much of that we'd be able to use TID money on. That'd be like a whole separate conversation for another day if we want to, like, increase the communication strategy, where now we're just like reacting to a proposal that was sent to the village.
Yeah, again, I'll say that I think that, you know, knowing that the tourism business community is excited about this. And it would be a good, and I think it's a good collaboration and that we do have communication funding and then combined with TID 9 and TID 10, and then asking for that 50% match with the tourism. For the deliverables that are proposed through this opportunity, I think that it's, it's worthwhile, in my opinion.
For funding, I'm sorry, I need to keep talking. For funding, if we do get a match, if we were to get a match from tourism, could we reduce the, like, we don't have to reduce all three equally. Can we just reduce the communication so we could use it on other stuff? Because that would just leave TID money, which is TID money.
Yeah, I think that we could give direction in a motion on how you'd like to do that. Chris?
You want me to make a motion? I, I can't.
Move on from this one.
Oh, gosh, now I got to think of a motion on the fly. Make a motion to approve $29,300 as, as presented, less any matching funds from the Chamber Tourism Fund to be taken from the capital fund. Reduce that first. Does that work?
I'll second. There's a motion by Stoa and a second by Murphy. Any more discussion on this?
That's okay. Can Lisa read it back?
I don't think I caught it all. I was going to have to look at the recording.
It was a motion that...
Motion to approve the money, less any tourism funds that are approved, to reduce the Capital Fund 412, or, sorry, 410 first, and then to reduce the TID money equally, if that makes sense.
Yep, that's what, my understanding.
Do you want to read it back or do you?
Does everyone have an understanding of the motion on the table? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Obstein? Motion fails. Is there any appetite for further discussion on this? Otherwise, we'll move on. All right, we'll discuss and consider the claim for reimbursement for property damage during a police squad accident. There is an option to go into closed session. The role of the Village Board here is to approve the insurance claim. Personnel matters are handled by a police, Police Commission. And there's an internal and external investigation that is ongoing. We received information in our emails. There was also public social media, I think, put out over the weekend so that the public was aware of it as well.
Yeah, I would say if there's any, like, questions about facts or anything like that, we should go into closed session to discuss further. But if you feel comfortable moving forward, the village could make a decision right now.
Postpone until we, yeah.
Closed. All right. We will then move on to reports from Village Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Utility Commission is up first.
We met on Wednesday, July 9th at 5:00 PM. We did all the normal stuff at first. And then we talked about well-to rehab and got a drawing there. We talked about the 2024 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report in which we scored 100 out of 100. We discussed and approved a zero-lot line application for 221 West Park View. And we got the Engineers Report, which I'm going to pull up in just a second. Strand review changes to the lift station sites. Amazon is working, I'm sorry, they finished the Public Utilities. They're preparing newly-installed water mains for the week of June 30th. Hayday's moving along. Coil Highlands and Pine Meadows are as well. And the Director's Report is... Verizon's continuing to work on the Water Tower 3 and the plans for those. They did some water valve exercising and water service, water service at Fireman's Park. The installation of a curb stop was completed. And that's it. We adjourned. And then we moved into public works. Well, I moved into public works.
Any questions for Chris on utility?
Chris, I'm Cam Nelson. I do have, before we move on to public works, I know we have a couple of members in the audience that are here for Plan Commission. If the other members, I would just suggest that maybe we move that ahead of public works.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on utilities?
I think we should still take public works in order just because of the Amazon traffic impact analysis, because that ties in, so.
Thought I was getting a break. No, it's all right. All right, public works also met on July 9th at 5:30. Normal business to start. We discussed reallocation, reallocation of funds for street and sidewalk maintenance. That was about $40,000. That is going to improve some roads, some leftover funds there. We discussed sustainability goals, potentially creating a line item to review sustainability options each year. We're going to keep talking about that. New business, we had an update on the Amazon traffic impact analysis, which is in the agenda. If anyone has any questions for Kylo after I finish talking. We discussed the updated snow and ice control program, which has been, not been updated for a decade and a half or so. And that is coming along. We talked about and approved no parking along Vilas Road within village limits near Baccan Park. Engineers report and Director's report largely the same from utilities. Future, oh, sorry, we also, the stop signs were installed at Michelle and, and Landmark. We're going to talk in the future about storm water utility feasibility. And Nick in the, on the committee had a request to talk about stop sign guidelines at a future meeting. And I think that's it, unless Kyle's got anything to add.
Any questions on the overall agenda or comments?
So there's a discuss and consider on the agenda for the recommendation of the budget amendment that was presented at Public Works. Usually Cam would give his spiel about a budget amendment. What is shown in your memo for Cam's budget amendment is what was presented to Public Works that they approved. Reallocation of funds for $40,000 for street maintenance and additional sidewalk that we do as both staff as well as sidewalk grinding for treppesards. So looking for that approval here today.
So there is the discuss and consider. Any comments or questions on that item?
Yeah, it was unclear what property was sold. Sale of property. We budgeted 60. We're saying we're going to sell for 75. Is that done? Is it, what is that?
I would, that's the one problem question I probably can't answer. Do you know what's, Matt?
I don't know specifically, but that would appear to be, that's probably, that's equipment of some sort, vehicles.
Oh, not, it's not physical property.
I believe so. That's Fund 411 is equipment and vehicles.
Yep.
It's not land and building.
One of our equipments that we sold.
Circleless equipment.
Yep, there we go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is a discuss and consider.
I'd make a motion to approve Budget Amendment 2025-08 as presented.
Second? There's a motion by Murphy and a second by Severson. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, obscene, motion carries. We have the update on the traffic, Amazon traffic.
Yes, we do. So Josh is going to give a quick, quick update here on his presentation that he gave to Public Works. The traffic impact analysis was also sent out to Village Board members as previously requested. I hope you read that before you went to bed because it's a lengthy document. It should be noted, we did, both the county and the state as well as village staff did just receive a submittal from Pinnacle, Amazon's Developers Engineer, late last week on a preliminary design for the layout of what those improvements are going to look like. Both county and village and the state are reviewing those internally. However, it should be reminded that while the village looks at those drawings, we do not have any jurisdiction. And ultimately, any updates and any design modifications would have to come through both the county and the state. Josh?
Yeah, so I was just gonna, so what Kyla and I were talking about was, and what we, we discussed with the Public Works Committee was to try to post something on the website. Keep it, keep it in a general sense of what's been studied to date and then like what is upcoming for at least the public so they understand it. Like Kyla said, we, we just received some plans late Thursday. I looked at them a little bit. We could, if we want as a group here, I can pull them up and just show you about what, what they look like now. Again, in context, to know that this is really the county and the state that ultimately are going to review these and improve these yet, and they have not, you know? So I'm, first, I'm just going to walk through the slides, if that's okay. Just take a couple of minutes and walk through the slides. And then if we want to, if we want to go to the plans, we can, we can do that also. So this is something, again, that we, we, we gave to Public Works and we also wanted to just kind of keep on the, keep on the website and the project page. There's a project overview as part of it, just describing the new facility, the square footage of it, the storage space, how many floors, what surrounds the site for people so they understand. The new site has the four proposed access points, two along TT, two along N. It's important to note that there's one access point, the north one on N, that will have, they'll have trucks only. The employees will, will go to all three others on the site. So we just have, just a, a plan view of what that site looks like with the four access points on the roadways there connecting to TT and N. So just an overview sheet. And then trip generation. A lot of people are typically curious, well, how many trips are there going to be? And again, this is pulling out of the TIA that the state and the county, and we had a little bit of, of, of conversation in it as well as they were developing what they expected them to generate at the site. So they expect 788 employees per shift, two shifts a day. And then there's an AM peak and a PM peak. So the number of employees during their peak one hour of traffic. And that's not how many employees are coming there, 491, like during the AM peak. That's the AM peak at the roundabout or at one of these intersections when they're seeing the most traffic. That's how many vehicles would be there for, for, specifically for the site. You can see in the evening period, there's a lot more because that peak and that shift change overlaps with probably the shift or the majority of the, you know, let's say, four to six traffic in the afternoon. And it's also important to note that the truck trips will probably be pretty minimal during the peak hour periods. And what Amazon was telling the state, the county, and us is that every, all the large truck trips, so the semi-traffic trailers are coming on and off of 94 to the facility and then back out the same way. They do not expect them to go down N or on TT as part of it. And they will carry that message forward as, as the project is developed. There's a traffic report that assumes distributions for trips. So the trips coming, where are they coming from? There's a traffic report that assumes distributions for trips, so the trips coming, where are they coming from and where are they going to? So this is kind of that, that distribution below, it's probably hard to read on your screen, show, you know, 30% will be coming from the east on 94, 30% from the west, they'll distribute back the same way. And then locally on N, TT, from either direction. So this is how the state, Amazon, the county all agreed, this is how they should distribute the traffic on the network, and where, you have to kind of assume a little bit when you're doing this, and put a, you know, engineering judgment and traffic judgment to these numbers. There's also a request, just so you know, from the county, that afterwards, after it's built, they will monitor the access points, monitor some of the intersections. And if they're, if they suspect that they're seeing higher traffic volumes than what were projected, they're gonna have to go back and count these intersections again, and potentially address something if it needs to be addressed. So that is, that is a disclaimer that the county has in some of the permitting of this. Intersections studied, it just, it was in their TA, it showed the different intersections that they looked at. They looked at the intersection south here at Gaston and N, and then they went north at both ramp inner changes. The third roundabout to the north, where N and TT come together, the four access points that they proposed. And then they went further north, all the way to the north, where T and N meet, and looked at that intersection. So they took what the existing traffic was there, they took the distributed traffic, and then they modeled it all in a large report, as Kyla said, if you wanna look at some of those results. We didn't put all that in here for, for the public. We just put some preliminary traffic modeling results and what would happen at each of these locations. And then from that, what we showed is, we just showed a brief overall map of where, and we just tried to kind of, at least for the general public, box out and circle where these things would take place. So you see the circled red four access points. The roundabout to the north will probably have fairly decent reconstruction limits. And then all the boxes in yellow will probably have all-new asphalt at the same time. So they'll be milled, they'll be added on with additional turnbays. And it'll probably be a fresh set of asphalt on the majority of that roadway, moving forward after it's done. Since we put this together and talked to the public works department, like I said, we got, we had, we do have some drawings. I don't know if we wanna go through any of those. Again, they're preliminary at this point. Would anybody like to just see any of that, or do we wanna wait on a different time? I think we can post some of that stuff maybe later, once it's, it's more finalized too, just because things, things probably will change a little bit.
Would anyone like to see anything additional? I do not, at a preliminary stage.
No, I appreciate the update, and certainly as we get closer and more details are available, it'd be great to go through it.
Yeah, I would think in the next month or two, you know, let the state and the county kind of, they'll have most of the feedback like we, like we thought. And then as things get finalized, I think we can bring that forward and also include some of those drawings maybe on the website at the same time, so people can see them.
So I was the nerd that asked for the 600 pages of all of this, and I didn't quite make it through it all, I'll be honest. But the reason I did that is, one of my major concerns is the intersection of N and Commerce Parkway. And, you know, we're going to see if, if the numbers are right, right? That it's an estimate, at least another 315 cars coming through that intersection. And I don't know if some of the board members, but before I was elected to the board earlier in the year, I had emailed the village board, because I was already concerned about traffic at that intersection, and particularly after we had the accident that had three ambulance transport patients. I was very concerned. And I did end up meeting with Kyla and Chief Gary about, you know, kind of that configuration. And what stood out to me was one of the things that Kyla said to me was, you know, that intersection wasn't really designed. And I don't remember your exact words, but like, all that great, like it wasn't designed kind of for the, the traffic that it gets. And, you know, like, one of the things that I told her is, back when we designed that intersection, we had, the areas where all the apartments are now was zoned and intended to be industrial, right? And so we kind of designed that intersection with that in mind. And so when we talk about the additional usage coming from the south and all of those cars, I think we're gonna probably have to look at doing something with this intersection prior to that. You know, I watch a lot of near misses when I'm driving to work, and so it's, it's a concern of mine when the traffic from Amazon comes on board. So I'm just kind of voicing that.
So to confirm, that intersection was designed when and was still under county jurisdiction. So county and the village would have worked together at that time. I don't know exactly when it was built. I think it was like 2011, 2012, 2010, 2012, in that general area. So at that point in time, as it's been discussed, when we're looking at the Commerce Park overall, in terms of pavement widths, the lack of sidewalks, that the uses for that park in general were a different understanding 12 years ago on what it actually ended up looking at. Now, what that looks like for an intersection improvements, long-term, with the future development that is being proposed off of Gaston, as well as Amazon, that would have to be looked into significantly further.
Go ahead, Heidi.
So, just on the further, like it, we have four lanes, and then we have turn lanes from the smaller, like, are we talking about like making the intersection even bigger than that? Like, like I guess, I mean, a roundabout's probably the thing that makes the most sense there, although that's, as a pedestrian, I get a little nervous crossing at roundabouts, because people are looking to their left instead of, but I'm sure that the crosswalks are placed appropriately, so they're looking in the right spot to watch them. But like, it's a big intersection already, like I guess, yes, there, I'm sure there are improvements that can be made, but like, it's already like huge.
And what those improvements would look like, and I don't know, Josh, if you wanna jump in here in a second. It could be on how streetlights are timed, what those lanes actually look like, are they through and turn lanes? I mean, you have the very dedicated right-hand turn lanes that were needed as part of a variety of developments through there. I wouldn't anticipate a bigger intersection, makes for more snow plowing, intersections are already hard. But I'm not a full-on traffic engineer.
Yeah, I think you would, you know, so I think Paul has, has good points. Obviously, this is your largest intersection, probably sees the most traffic in the village, for sure. With that, the more lanes you add, the more turnbays you add, as Chief knows, is, is the more accidents you tend to have, right? Even, even some rear-end, you know, just property damage accidents. You just, they just tend to go up at intersections, it's the most dangerous spot on the road typically, is at intersections. The good thing that Amazon had to do, because they delayed so much, they did, redid their TA several times, and they had to recount some of the intersections again. So the good thing about that was, a lot of these apartments were then built this last time they had to count it. So I feel pretty good about the level of service, meaning like how much delay you see at it, and how much traffic can flow through it. It's gonna be more of the safety aspect of it, and as it gets more traffic, you know, what kind of accidents, and you'll probably have to monitor, is there specific accidents that are happening, and can something be done, like, like Kyla mentioned, on maybe some small geometric changes, or some light timing issues of how much green time you give people, so that they aren't running or squeezing that yellow at the end, you know, is there some things you can do? Lengthen, lengthen the yellow to red timing, even of it, so that people can get through the intersection before the other side turns green. There's a lot of things you can look at, and I don't wanna get into too many, too much detail on that, I guess, until you probably look at it and study it a little bit more.
So that intersection is in our capital improvement plan, moving forward for 2031, and it was ranked a B by the village board this year, as it was unfunded. But I'm assuming that with more information and developments to the north, the village board would reconsider. And the cost, I think you had $500,000 in there in 2031, or $638,000 in 2031, but perhaps, depending on what is needed, that costs, it changes and...
Yep, and the 20, correct. And the 2031 timeline was based on the age of the pavement, of not wanting to completely reconstruct, reconstruct an intersection that still has six, 10 years more of lifespan left, and coordinating it with some other improvements in that area. But it's definitely something that as more developments and Amazon comes on, if we see that it's a problem, it can easily be, oop, sorry, move forward into...
Additional information maybe gets incorporated into next year's prioritization, so that we have the foresight to move it up if we need to.
Absolutely.
Comments, questions about the traffic study? Thank you. Moving on, Plan Commission. So we have a long list of discussion items here. So Plan Commission met on Wednesday, July 9th at 6:30. We approved the minutes, and then we got right into it. We unanimously approved a zero lot line application to split an existing duplex at 221 West Parkview Street, with staff recommendations. We, the recommendations were that there was a maintenance agreement for both parcels that needed to be submitted, and also approval from Utility Commission, that happened right before our meeting. Moving through the agenda tonight, I think we'll just take each one, discuss and consider as we go. So Erin, do you have anything to add about the zero lot line application?
No, I think you covered it. It's an existing duplex, they just wanna split it up, so each unit can have its own separate entity owning it.
Are there any questions or comments on that item?
Make motion to approve the zero lot line application as presented with staff conditions.
I'll second that.
Alright, there's a motion by Murphy and a second by Dahl. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same, motion carries. Alright, and then for efficiency purposes at Plan Commission, we combined several items into the same discussion point. We heard from Creed Indoor on their preliminary proposal, so kind of the first step in the process, for a $20 to $22 million indoor/outdoor sports complex. We also heard from staff, and, and all of those memos and attachments are in our agenda tonight as well. In brief, and we're gonna likely discuss and hear a little bit more about it tonight, it's a 32-acre parcel, consistent with the future plan for growth in that area, and for the village's comp plan for light industrial. The town of Sun Prairie, town of Cottage Grove, and the states have no issue with the annexation, so the kind of the first step, which I believe is the item B under Plan Commission here, is the approval of the annexation petition into the village for these parcels. It also included the planned industrial zoning for the annexed parcels. Erin, do you have anything? We can take the annexation first.
Yeah, so the, the annexation, because the Hooksters still own the property, so the annexation petition comes from them. So this would be independent if it gets used, other than applying the planned industrial zoning to it. The only input the state had was just looking for some corrections to, they found a small discrepancy between the legal description and the annexation map, which I believe we got an email from the applicant's attorney today, that they've cleaned that up.
So, I guess with this, the annexation itself is just bringing this land into the jurisdiction of the village. With it, like Marion mentioned, it does have the planned industrial zoning. So if you're comfortable moving forward with bringing it into the jurisdiction under that zoning, you could approve. If you'd like to change the zoning designation to, I think rural holding, to, that was a discussion point at Plan Commission, is potentially changing the zoning. But you could approve the annexation with a different zoning designation. One thing I will mention with the annexation, sometimes the DOA has like minor comments that they want us to make some changes to the ordinance. I would just ask for some discretion to make minor like changes to the ordinance if it's approved, just to comply with any DNA, or DOA Department of Administration recommendations.
Why, why would we change the zoning to rural holdings?
So, it's a, yes, so basically when it's brought in, you do a, like a, a zoning designation. Sometimes communities will do like rural holding, whether it's like just a policy choice, or it's like actually in their ordinance, because then you get, the applicant brings forward like the actual application to rezone, and you can, if you want more information, or you feel like you don't have enough information to approve the zoning. So sometimes communities do that, the recommendation was for planned industrial.
I have a procedural question, if I may, Rick. I was watching the meeting, and during the public hearing, I think it was actually while he was talking, he asked if anybody had any questions, and he got kind of shut down for that. And I thought we could ask questions during public hearings.
During public hearings, it's more or less comments that are given to the, the decision-making body. There can be, we try not to like encourage a discussion, because like you get three minutes, right? So if somebody makes a comment or asks a question, typically what we do is write the question down. Somebody might ask it, or the applicant will try to answer that question. Or, you know, after the public hearing, will provide more information.
Yeah, I'm not talking about like getting in a back and forth or something, but can we, like, asking a clarifying question, is that okay, or? Because it...
Yes, they can ask a clarifying question, but there's not an obligation necessarily to answer it. But it can be a question that the plant commissioners or the board would pose to the applicant after all the comments are received.
I don't think I care for that process. Thank you.
So I think we're drifting a little bit from the...
So were there, was there, there's no minutes here, so what were the comments in the public hearing? How many people were there?
Haven't quite got to that yet.
Oh, you're right.
Because we are on the, on B right now.
Yeah, the CUP was where there was, I mean, the comments were related to both items.
Peter, because, because they were combined into one hearing, I put the comments just in the conditional use permit, Steph, the action report, so you could look in the village action report for the next item. That would include the discussion about both topics, essentially.
Does this board want to move forward with the annexation petition with the planned industrial zoning to the parcels? Or would you like to move on to the next item?
Yeah, I got a question. I went over there and looked. I mean, that, that section of Gaston, when it ends at the village, it's like less than 18 feet wide. There's no curb, no gutter. So what are the, what's the ramifications? Who's, who would pay for that? Obviously, there's road improvements that are required here.
So actually, I was gonna mention this during the conditional use permit process, but adding a condition, basically, that the developer needs to install any public improvements deemed necessary by the village engineer to serve the development, something along those lines, to address any public improvements that need to be determined as like the site plan and process moves forward.
So I also went over there, and the road is, you're right, the road's very narrow, and it's also kind of rough. So if we wanted them to fix the road, would they only do half the road then?
We wouldn't be able to do any improvements in any of the road that's not under our jurisdiction. But we can also, it depends on the scope of the public improvement. So if we're talking about the annexation, this is where you've got the most discretion. So if you wanna, I have to think about how we would like do the, I guess, phasing, or how we make this effective, because once it's in the village, it's in the village. We can't like kick the territory out. But we could impose a condition on the annexation, that they do all the public improvements, or do the CUP condition to do the necessary public improvements. It, it's hard, I mean, maybe Josh can speak more to his analysis of the public improvements. I don't know if we have a full sense of what's needed out there at this point in time.
Let me share just Google's, again, just the overview of the site. And again, obviously, we don't have full drawings, we just have some very conceptual stuff at this point. But to the south here, where Oakstone is, right, we have a, we have a pretty good street section. We have a municipal street that dead-ends there, a lift station for the sewer that's there and water main that's stubbed out to the site. Essentially, sewer and water are ready. There's been discussions a little bit about looping water main through the site. So I'm just gonna run my cursor up here. Imagine an access point here in Commerce, that's a nice urban access point, and that road's in good shape. And then it comes up, and it potentially tees in over here on the other side. There's also water main that's gonna be going in along Gaston in the next year, that this would kind of loop the system. When you get to this road up on Gaston, though, you guys are very, very right. It's narrow. Once you, once you get past where it's been developed, it gets very narrow. But in initial conversations, we were thinking, you know, this needed to be urbanized into the access. But then beyond that, the developer potentially won't tie anything into the rest of Gaston. It almost acts as just a dead, dead-end road for two or three houses here, two houses, I guess, maybe a third up the hill. It's almost like going up to where the old water tower is, Bachan Park. And it's just a paved 20-foot, you know, roadway that we redid a few years ago, pulverized and milled. Really just for the residents on that road, but not really for access for anybody else. You'd almost have kind of that same situation here. You probably wouldn't urbanize it, you probably wouldn't stick the money in to put in curb and everything else on it when it's, when it functions for, you know, three... it functions for, you know, three residents there. Unless it was connected in the future somewhere else. Just an initial thought. You're talking about on either side, Josh? Probably on either side. You wouldn't put curb and extend the curb that's by Johnson Health Tech along the southern side of the roadway? Like, like, sorry, let me zoom in. Can you see my cursor down here? You can see that cursor, right? I think, I think you're gonna have to urbanize out to where their access point would be. I'm talking about beyond that, up and around the, you know, down around this entire stretch could, could stay narrow and almost that town road's style. They really wouldn't be impacting that as part of their traffic if they didn't connect to it, if that makes sense. You know, if the developer didn't connect to that piece of the roadway anywhere, there's really the only traffic that would use that, majority of that back half would be those three residents still. And obviously services that the village or, or the town would provide.
That roadway is also shared at this time between the village, town of Cottage Grove and town of Sun Prairie. So there's a lot of coordination in terms of paving as well, just as a side note.
Alright, are there any other comments or questions about the, we're on, still on B, the annexation petition?
So Kyla, the, the, that northern lot is in the town. No, that's in-
That's in Sun Prairie.
That's in the town of Sun Prairie. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So it's essentially a very small wedge that's impacted by the town of Sun Prairie and the town of Cottage Grove that has to be cared for. You want to bring up yours, Kyla, cause you have the property boundaries on? I don't.
Um, yeah, kind of. So this is the current Village of Cottage Grove limits. If you search Village of Cottage Grove limits, obviously this is the parcel that we're discussing to be annexed in. I don't have the map up of the annexation of what that looks like. But there's a portion here that still has to be a sliver of the town of Sun Prairie because you can't have the discontinuation between the two. So the village, I believe, Erin, it's only the southern half that we would, that's being annexed. Is any of the road along their property being annexed?
That little gap, no. But once you get beyond that, it's the entire right of way.
Okay. Yep. So it'd be the entire right of way as por, as a part of that for their property line.
So if we annex that north part, we're gonna be on the south side of Gaston Road and then the town of Sun Prairie is gonna be on the other side. So who takes care of the-
Don't.
Somebody say something?
Someone was starting to.
Somebody's on, somebody's on the wave.
As their attorney.
Yeah, for the property owner. But, so I guess like the right of way, typically our recommendation is to take the whole right of way. State law allows you to and it just makes future annexations easier. So if we go to the center line, it can create future issues with islands because we can't create town islands. So our recommendation always is to take the entire right of way that's adjacent to the property.
So you're saying- You're saying that Gaston Road all the way up to where it gets close to the interstate, that would be, we would take the right of way?
Yes, the village would be taking basically that whole, the entirety of Gaston Road east of where that little sliver is.
So the little sliver that's, there's a little sliver that's the town on both sides.
Correct.
There's a house on the south side and then there's that little wedge triangle. Both sides of the street are the town after annexation. Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. And then basically anything east of Gaston.
Just on the section right there.
Correct. So-
Well, we don't, we don't allow for public feedback at this point.
I'm trying to share what was in the packet is, is that parcel right now.
Can you zoom in a little bit too then?
You zoom in on that one section.
This section right in here?
Yes.
So this section right in here remains open.
Yeah.
So it comes around that, cause this, this parcel-
That parcel's in the town.
Still remains in the town.
Town of Cottage Grove.
And then the, the parcel to the left, there's a little small wedge. You got the horizontal line which separates the historical town of Sun Prairie and the town of Cottage Grove. There's a little wedge to the left. You go to the left. So there's, I don't know how many feet that is, but both sides of the street are in the town. So can we take right responsibility for right of way when both sides of the street are in the town of Cottage Grove?
We would not be responsible for that section. The town of Sun Prairie has asked for like a, if this were to be approved, just like a road maintenance agreement where it's like, we're just gonna take responsibility for that little section.
For this little section here that I'm-
That's the town. You said the town of Sun Prairie. That's the town of Cottage Grove. That section right there.
Yes. So I think we would be reaching out to the town of Cottage Grove as well. I mean, cause we're not gonna lift the plow up, right? Just a-
No.
Well, you know, I, it's interesting because as you come off the interstate, there's, you know, as far as maintaining lawn mowing, there's been discrepancy. You know, is this the county? Is this the village? Who takes care of it? So, I don't know. I feel that that's kind of just dicey territories without it being defined, for one.
So as part of the annexation agreement, we would, or the annexation, we would, you know, direct staff to have the agreement, the maintenance agreement on that stretch of roadway is that, I mean, we can't create a town island. So, you know, they have to have that connection. And, you know, this area makes sense for the growth of our commerce park. It kind of completes the whole, it's the last remaining area and that, like, and it was planned for in our comprehensive plan to be commercial growth.
Right. I, something like this, like the, the town of Sun Prairie has already said they're okay with the, the village, you know, maintaining that little sliver. I don't anticipate the town of Cottage Grove would have any concerns about the village doing that, especially since it, I mean, we would just say we're not gonna charge you anything for it because it's-
When you say the town of Sun Prairie, so when you go up and you're going horizontally north and, north and, I'm sorry, east and west on the top of that, then it curves and it goes south. That's in the, that's in the, the town of Sun Prairie, right?
So-
But it would border, it would border kind of the easternmost side of, of the two parcels. But the right side of that on the top is the town of Sun Prairie.
So basically everything to the east of that little like sliver is gonna be within the village. So the village will be taking care of east Gaston Road from that little sliver that we were just pointing out. East of there, the village would take under their jurisdiction. Actually don't think that on the far eastern parcel side, I don't think that's actual right of way. It's, it shows up on the map as like a long road, but I think part of it is not.
I'm talking about the right side of parcel two. If you go to the right side of parcel two, Gaston Road actually goes south.
Correct.
And across the street of, of that, those three lots are in the town of Sun Prairie.
So those three lots would remain in the town of Sun Prairie, but the entire right of way would be in the village.
In there. Okay.
Yep.
So then as far as repairing that road, it's fractured pretty bad. That would have to be repaired and that would be part of the developer's agreement as well, not on the village, right?
We would have to work that on the development agreement, yes. But the, we have to be somewhat like cognizant of what the actual costs of development are and what can be fairly attributed to the development. But I guess the point is, all that east Gaston Road would be under the village's jurisdiction. So responsible for road maintenance and improvements. But, you know, your schedule for maintenance of that, especially with the water main going in, I'm not sure what, I mean, there's gonna be road improvements done to that stretch anyway because of the road or the water main project, but-
But currently, that, that entire stretch around parcel two is in the town of Sun Prairie and it's in pretty rough shape. I'm sorry. I'm not. So that entire loop that goes around parcel two of east Gaston Road is all currently under the town of Sun Prairie's right of way, right? So they're responsible to repair it. They're responsible to maintain it. I'm just more concerned about the condition of that road. And if we take it under our jurisdiction, we're gonna have to repair that road at some point. That's a cost that the village is gonna take on, not because the village needs to do it. It's because this development is taking us into that realm, right?
Yes. I, I would say that there's, I mean, it's not solely serving the development, but I think we would be looking at what are the actual needed improvements and what can we attribute to the development.
But it falls to our, our responsibility because of this, yeah.
Correct.
Can I just, can I share my screen for a moment since we're talking about that road? I don't know if, okay. So, let's see here. So I drove out there and took pictures. So these are some pictures of east Gaston. And then this is kind of looking up the hill as you're going towards the dead end. The reason I did this is because I watched the town board meeting from their first meeting in July where they discussed our annexation petition. And their public works director said, this is gonna be expensive for the village. That whole road needs to be rebuilt. And I was like, wait, what? And so that's why I went out and took pictures myself. So I think it's kind of a big endeavor, but I just wanted to share those while we're talking specifically on the road.
Thanks for taking the pictures, Paul. I mean, I went out there, it's what I saw. I should've documented like you did, but thank you. Cause that's exactly the concern I had.
Kyla, can you speak to a little bit? There's, there's like three trips a day over there.
Yep. So all of that area is all just for driveway access as Josh mentioned. Yes, there would probably have to be street improvements to the driveway access for the secondary access for the potential development that we're talking about. But the rest of that street could easily be pulverized, milled, very similarly that we did to Clark or to Grove Street up the hill that serves five homes. While I don't disagree that it's not a concern that there is pavement failure, but unfortunately we have pavement failure throughout the village. If that's, that's kind of just the concern. It does only service a handful of residents during the day.
And it's, oh, sorry. I was gonna say, it's not a requirement that we bring the right of way in. Like I said, we typically recommend it just because it makes potential future annexations easier. But if the village said, no, we don't want to take over that, that road after a certain point, we could request that they amend the petition to take that right of way out.
We are talking about several tens of millions of dollars of a development that would easily be able to pay for, I mean, any of this.
Go ahead, Heidi.
That was actually going to be a point like we're looking at, you know, twenty million dollar plus project that will help our tax base repair these roads and many other roads or, you know, reduce the tax burden on all taxpayers in the village by increasing our tax base because it's not in a TID. There's no incentives, like, you know, that TID's expired. So it comes on tax rolls right away. So that's a huge benefit. And then that was an interesting, I hadn't thought of that point that Rick just brought up. So that kind of, you know, if we decided not to include that, amend the, yeah, just an option I hadn't thought of, so.
Alright, let's try and make a little progress on this. So the discuss and consider for the annexation petition. I, can I just speak generally to the, so I have a lot of concerns with this annexation. And I, again, I probably look through a different lens than my, the folks up here. So a lot of my concerns, I went to the Plan Commission meeting just to like learn as much as I could. You know, we've only had eighteen days where this has been in the public arena. And that's generally not a time, like, I mean, for a, a project of this size and scope, you know, we, look how long we took to do the police station. Like, I, I feel like this has been a little bit rushed. But I, I did some homework on, after the Plan Commission and they talked about the property in New Berlin. So I looked at that property. I want to share my screen again, please, if that's okay. I don't know if somebody- So when I looked at their property in New Berlin, you know, it's, it's kind of an apples to oranges comparison with the property that we have here. So you'll see there are two lanes going in both directions on Racine Avenue, West National Avenue. You know, it's, it's very open. There's farmland around the facility. If you've, I just did a snip of that. But if you go north, there's more farmland, the, the fire station's kind of up in that area. So I compared that to what is being proposed in our village and I have some serious traffic concerns. So obviously I already mentioned the Amazon situation during that conversation and my concerns about N and Commerce. I'm also concerned about landmark and Commerce and also concerned about landmark and east Gaston. So I know that it was proposed that the entry would come, and I, hopefully you'll see my cursor, maybe not, up, I think that's Herb, Herb Road, into the property. When I look at this huge development, I look at, through a lens of public safety, right? So we already talked that Gaston's kind of in rough shape. But I believe on the sports complex, there are outlets to that area if I'm understanding this correctly. But from an emergency services perspective, you know, I think about if there's a mass event out there, a fire emergency, an active threat, something of that nature where people need to be evacuated and have multiple ways out of that area. And simultaneously getting fire trucks and ambulances and whatever into that area, this really causes some concern for me. Do I think that the property tax, you know, money that we get from this would be good? Do I think some families would benefit from this development? Absolutely. Do I think this is the right location? I don't. I think we're squeezing way too much into a Commerce Park already. And I understand the time differences and such, but again, through the lens of public safety, there's a lot of traffic concerns. The other piece that I'm very concerned about is in the comp plan in chapter five on page twenty-nine. When we looked at what planned business slash industrial, you know, in the policies, number one says, you know, market planned office industrial areas for research, development, testing uses, professional offices, private community facility uses like medical centers, like manufacturing and assembly and warehousing. This is a completely different scope. And I think that, is it technically, you know, Rick, I'm sure it is technically within this, but I don't see this being part of the vision for that space. I, I just, I have a lot of struggles with all of this.
Okay. So I, so this is, you mentioned being in the public arena. This is a private development. It's not like the police station, which is a village project. I think I want to move on though to maybe hearing about the Creed Indoor proposal. So we just have a better idea of what is actually being proposed. I know most of us watched the Plan Commission meeting. But I think that maybe if we're gonna work through these discuss and considers, we should maybe just start and do a little bit more listening from the proposal so that we all are on the same page with all of the facts that are being presented. And so, could you actually stop sharing and then could we pull up the site plan? I don't know, Erin, if you can do that. So I'm just gonna, also for the sake of time, kind of, I'll just kind of finish my discussion on what we, we discussed a little bit. So we did have the public hearing. We had several residents come. We had Oakstone that also came, their owner did. We had taken kind of that brief summary of comments where concerns with traffic, concerns with the road, the noise, the hours of operation, lighting, landscape barrier, et cetera, which I think will all be taken into consideration by the developer, working along with our staff and our engineers to make sure that we are within all of the guidelines of our ordinances. When we all, we had that same discussion at Plan Commission. We were, I think the develop, you know, the applicant obviously heard all of the concerns and was going to work through some of those concerns with Oakstone and some of the adjacent residents as well. The Plan Commission did unanimously approve both the annexation petition and the zoning and conditional use permit. If we can, if we can make it a little bit bigger. Erin, can you maybe brief us again on the project, staff recommendations? And then we can, if it's okay, allow the applicant to come up and also kind of give a little bit of discussion and overview.
Typically, we would have the applicant come up and present the project and go through staff report.
We can switch the order. Do you want to come up and, can you go through the project for us?
Yes, absolutely.
Just make sure you have your, like, microphone on. Thanks.
Little person. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Erin Colley. I'm presenting this project or proposing this project in Cottage Grove. Just to touch on, I mean, just because it was an important item for the traffic end of it, is when it comes to a facility, whether indoor or outdoor, the traffic management comes from how we schedule events. And so when we do, like, play-sit-play tournaments, whether it's softball, baseball, basketball or whatnot, it's a controlled, it's not like a, like a music concert event where it ends and then it's a mad rush out. It's, there's some constant traffic, but it's, it's smooth. It doesn't add a lot to that area, which we would also present in a traffic study as we move forward. Just to present the project, it's a large indoor sports facility that hosts a variety of sports, from, from soccer to lacrosse to baseball to softball, to basketball courts, pickleball, or that convert into pickleball and also volleyball courts as well. There's sports performance training, so that's for the athletes that either work out there or do not work out there. At our facility in New Berlin, we have a lot of colleges that use our non-peak times, which is nice for them because, one, they don't have to build their own facilities, and two, we can offer non-peak costs to them that kind of gets them into the area. The outdoor fields are something that's really important to, you know, the economics of the building because you do, obviously, indoor sports are from October to April in a facility like this. And, you know, just as far as making a business plan work, the outdoor fields are important to that in the summer months. What else can I touch on? The parking is just over 900 spaces. At our facility in New Berlin, we have 700. Originally, we had 350, and we were having shuttle and park on roads because of events. And so when it comes to parking, we would host everybody in there, not using any type of roads around the area. The biggest thing that this sports facility, indoor/outdoor, does is it brings a lot to the surrounding businesses. And whether it's restaurants, coffee shops, hotels, I mean, the way I see this and the amount of events that we have and what we draw into, that you would probably need another hotel in this area, or they would have to travel further for it. We host events almost every weekend. They, obviously, the dynamic of the sports change in there from indoor to outdoor. The outdoor fields would be more of a, like, from April month to around October, you know, conducive to the weather in Wisconsin. So, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Throw it back over to Erin to kind of talk through his memos.
So as we mentioned, there's a couple of different items here seeking approval, first the annexation, then the conditional use permit. Talked over the annexation, the recommendation, the staff report was, just cleaning up the items that the DOA mentioned, making sure the legal description and map match exactly. As far as the conditional use permit for the sports facility, I guess as far as comp plan consistency, the, the chapter does also note that uses that support the ones that Paula mentioned, such as restaurants or daycares or sports and fitness facilities, are also suitable for the district. So the recommendation, or the planning recommendation, anyway, for the conditional use permit was approval with the CUP applying just to this business and would only become effective upon the applicant closing on the property. Just to note that any liquor license would be a separate process that they would have to go through to get the license. Just noting that the site plan is not part of what we're approving. They would come back with full engineering, landscaping, lighting, all of that for review by myself and Strand. The plan there is just kind of where they're at right now to, to illustrate the project. And then that they shall design outdoor lighting, landscaping, vehicle circulation to minimize impacts on adjacent residential properties, and those would also be reviewed at the site plan process. Just to touch on a few of Anthony's questions, as far as landscaping buffers, that's all required under the zoning ordinance. When there's two different zoning districts aligned, there would be quite a bit, quite a bit of buffing required. And that can be done with vegetation, it could be done with berms, it could be done with fences, or some combination thereof. Yeah, Josh, I don't recall if you had any comments for the CUP here, if you're kind of waiting for the full site plan.
Maybe, I mean, the full site plan's gonna tell us a lot, a lot more, but I'd like to comment on the traffic, right? You know, I'm only kind of assuming at this point, but I, I know what these facilities do, and I understand on, you know, let's take a look at, what would this be if this isn't here, right? What if this is a different use? What if this is sold to some other, somebody else in the future, it's annexed in, and it's similar to what's already there? I would argue that this is gonna produce less traffic in the peak periods at all your intersections than maybe something that's similar to what's already in the park. For this reason, is at the AM traffic, there probably isn't gonna be a whole lot going on when your AM peak traffic happens between six and eight in the morning at all these intersections. Now, on the PM, from four to six, that's when you're gonna start to see inflow into here, when you see most of the outflow out of here. So they're not gonna, they're gonna be two opposite directions. And when a majority of this traffic is coming in, it's typically the weekends during Bay events, and nobody, a lot of these businesses and a lot of these other places potentially are not opening or operating. Yes, there are some, but some of the big traffic drivers potentially are gone in those peak periods. You probably aren't gonna get that with other uses. It's, some of this is opposite of, of what you would get maybe with other uses. I'm just pointing that out. I have not seen any of the traffic, but I, I know, I've, I've seen similar facilities like this, I've seen similar TIA's and traffic stuff like this, and I kind of understand when the peaks and, and the valleys are at some of these places. You will have people in and out all day, though, which is common, but the, the real big stuff is gonna happen probably outside of a lot of your other peaks in this, in this area.
All right, I'll open it up to questions from board members. Heidi.
Thanks. So I appreciate this coming forward. I sat at a best of Cottage Grove meeting about four years ago, and some local representatives that are part of the local chamber of commerce said, "I travel all over the entire Midwest every single weekend with my kids, you know, club sport. Why don't we have that here? Because it's, you know, would draw, you know, visitors to our local restaurants, it would draw hotel stays, we're perfectly located, you know, between I-90 and 94 to come from various directions." So, you know, at that time, it's like, well, you know, we aren't really business people, you know, we just react to applicants that come forward. And so I think it was great to see this type of business come forward because I know there are people in the community that, you know, thought this would be a great addition. We have so many families here and a lot of kids participating in all sorts of various sports, so to have something local that clubs could use too, I think, is really beneficial. And I'm chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, and I know there's a lot of pressure for field space for all sorts of clubs, like, in the entire area. So to have another space that's available for rental, I think, would be really beneficial. And then from a personal level, I travel around to see my nephew and his club baseball. And so, you know, I kind of see how the flow of the events work, you know, the different times, people coming and going. So like you said, it was not like a concert where everybody lets out at once. You know, maybe if it's a championship game and then the weekend's over, you know, be a few more, but then there'd also be people celebrating and, you know, visiting our next-door restaurant to celebrate with the team. So I was excited to see this, and, you know, we're gonna have a lot more information. This is just the first, and you've done a lot of work ahead of time as a business owner, you know. You've done a lot of due diligence, a lot of, you know, there's a lot of work before it even comes to present to us. So, well, we're just seeing it for the first time. This is kind of like the first iteration, and then we'll see the, you know, the next finer detail. So, you know, traffic study, the site plan will be analyzed. You know, we can talk about dark sky lights to minimize impact on the neighbors and berms and, like, what the site plan looks like, so we minimize impact on the neighbors, and then address some of that in the developers' agreement. And also, part of our process is to rope in the safety branches, so we can talk about how do fire trucks get in and out, how do ambulances get in and out, how do we make sure that these pathways stay open so we have a nice circulation? We also talked at plan commission about, currently, we have semis that miss a turn to go into Johnson Health Tech, so they would have an ability to, like, get through if needed, you know, when they're doing a delivery. Because right now, they're turning around on that residential road, town-size road, so that's like a big problem. So this is something that, like, we'll be able to fine-tune through the site plan. So I was, I was very excited to see this come forward. I think it's a great opportunity for our community, it's a great opportunity for our local businesses, and we have, you know, the time in the next, between the next approval to work out more of the details. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, thank you for those comments, Heidi. I, I share a lot of those sentiments. I think that this is really a catalyst for that area when it comes to, you know, the businesses and the restaurants that are there, and I know the chamber is excited about it, I know those businesses are excited about it, the hotel is. I talked with quite a few residents over the weekend, and they're all, and a lot of them, and different sports parents are, are excited about this potential and also it being local. I'm, and from, on the personal level, too, I am one of those parents. I'm a softball coach. I've coached Madison, I've coached Kennedy, I've coached Cottage Grove, and field time is hard to come by. Winter training, finding facilities to train in the winter is hard, and I think this fills a really unique gap. I'm spending the week pretty much working from my minivan, but I'm out at the DeForest Athletic Complex with softball right now, and I, this weekend, definitely see all of the activity over there, and I think it'd be really exciting to have it over here. And I know that there's a lot of, the details, obviously, that needs to be worked out with, you know, the public safety aspects and how to properly configure the site, making sure that we're addressing all of the residents that do live there, their concerns, working through our ordinances, working with our engineers, but I think that this, there's a, a lot of really exciting potential, and I'm, I'm excited to see this come to Cottage Grove. Other comments from board members?
You know, I, I agree with everything you guys have said in terms of this is really something the community could use. I think it offers a lot of things that we don't have. However, you know, I will say that I think we're force-fitting it in this area. There's a lot of issues we talked about here. Maybe north of Amazon would be a better location. I, I just, I see a lot of issues with, you know, we've got 20% more traffic going north and south on, and intersection that we talked about. Bikeability to that, there's a very inconsistent set of, of bike paths to get over there. I, I really think it's a great project, I just don't think it's the right location, given all the issues that, that we've talked about. It really, this site fits with the commerce park, should be a warehouse facility, should be light assembly. To have something like this shoved in that area just is, to me, a force-fit.
Erin, you're the expert in the room. This is your business and your purchase and development. Can you speak a little bit to why you chose this parcel?
Yes, the visibility is amazing for that complex. It's a very good-looking building.
Oh, is your microphone not on?
The visibility for this business and building is incredible in that location. I know traffic better than anybody when it comes to these facilities. And like you said, it's, you're 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at night, and that's not affecting any businesses, nor is it gonna affect any residential traffic through there. And then it's the weekends, so, and that's that interior and, or inside and outdoor style, turf and business and whatnot. Your, your daytime is minimal. I mean, that's mostly adults, you know, whether it's pickleball or adult softball or whatnot. I chose this location because I drive past here three times a day because I'm building a large home on Mendota for another client of mine, and it drew me for months and months, and seeing that sign, that's when I started to look at it, I'm like, and it just became a perfect spot for me. So I don't feel I'm trying to fit anything out of the ordinary into a parcel. Those roads, like we talked about, our traffic isn't gonna go out those areas. And I know, on, on the fire department side and police department side, that they would like to have me have two entrances or, or two exits, but inevitably, if it doesn't have to go out that way, I don't have to go out that way either, because I can circulate through our property as well. So I love the proposed area. It works. I'm not sure what else would work over there or, or when, but I think it's great for the community at this time.
I, I could just add, if we, you know, if, if we don't move forward with this project, it'll, you know, it'll, it'll be a different board in five or so years, creating a TIP district here and then providing a $4 million incentive versus a project not asking for any incentive, paying a, I don't want to scare them away with taxes, but $450,000 to $500,000 tax bill annually, $130,000 to $150,000 to the village. So we can do a lot with that.
Erin, can you talk a little bit about your timeline on when you'd like to, or how you plan on moving forward if it's approved?
Yes, I mean, based on your timelines as well and approvals, would be, you know, late this fall, and then to, you know, commence the business the following fall. Just, you know, pending several things that have to be in place.
I agree with everything that's been said tonight. I just feel like this is really rushed and to, I feel like being, like I'm under the gun to pull the trigger. I feel like there's a lot of unanswered things, like, you know, paying for the, the streets, sidewalks, bike trails. You know, that's been kind of waffly here this evening of, you know, is the developer gonna pay for it? Is, is the village gonna pay for it? So I feel like, you know, in a perfect world, if, if we could have more time, I think this is absolutely fantastic. I would love, love, love to see this in the village, but again, I, I feel like needing a bit more time to review, discuss, and a little bit better articulate planning.
So there's no obligation, I guess, to approve this tonight? We could, we have, I think, 120 days from the submittal. I do think the, our pre-annexation agreement had a deadline, like, an effective date of the end of July. I'll have to double-check that. But we could potentially postpone action tonight if there's any specific information that you're looking for, that we could ask, that they bring back. That would be a potential option. I would just say, you know, we have to be specific about what, what information you would need to feel comfortable to make a decision.
Definitely the roads, you know, the, the curb and gutter, the streets, bike trails, sidewalks.
I think it would still be...
Can I comment on that?
Sorry, go ahead.
So, I mean, that, that comes with civil engineering, and, you know, when I bring something to the table here as far as a concept, I'm looking to see if you're on board with the concept. I'm not looking to make you spend money on roads and curbs and gutters. It's, you know, we've had conversations about looping the water main, and, you know, I'm more than open to help with that, but that, we're not at that time right now. I mean, there's an approval process. We can't invest hundreds of thousands of dollars when I need to have confidence in a board that's gonna approve something for us.
Right, I think that this is, again, it may seem like this is, you know, the first time that this board is seeing it. This is a concept that he's worked on for quite some time, and there's a process that is put in place so that you receive approval, so that you can continue moving forward. Before he invests 15% in A&E in a $22 million project, it doesn't make sense for him to do that unless he has the annexation that is approved and the conditional use permit. And then we start to see the site design, and then we are allowed to give additional, you know, staff will give conditions. We're allowed to give additional conditions to make sure that this is going to work within our community, within the residents that live there, and also make sure that he has the opportunity to, you know, have his business flourish.
Yeah, I, I respect that, the, you know, the upfront cost view, and yet, on the other hand, as me representing taxpayers of not knowing, you know, you know, who's gonna be responsible for this? We, we're having problems paying for our, our streets in the village the way it is. So I'm just, I love this project. I, again, I think this is phenomenal. It'd be great for the village, but to me, it, it feels rushed.
So at, at a future approval, you'd make a condition that says that the condition of approval is that he has to ma- of approval is that he has to make whatever, whatever majority of the board wants to say that he needs to do, he has to do it. If he doesn't do it, then he can't build the project.
I, I guess one other comment on, you know, potential path forward would be, you know, if you feel comfortable with the annexation, we could change the zoning designation to rural holding. That would allow at least the annexation to move forward, but we can, there would have to be a request to rezone the property to planned industrial then. And we could at least have some time to get any information that the board would want.
Chris, can you give your comment? You've had your microphone on.
Yeah, I just, I, I feel like we should still go forward with the, the annexation as proposed tonight. I mean, Pete said he wanted this to be an industrial building anyway. It's, it's going to be planned industrial regardless. We might as well just zone it now instead of zoning it to rural holding and then zoning it again to planned industrial, which is going to happen eventually anyway. And then I just wanted to speak to the bikeability aspect. I bike my kids to this area, kid safari when they were there and dolphin swim all the time. It's fine enough and it's certainly better than if this was located out by Amazon, which I would be more hesitant to bike my kids to. I guess, I, I think we should go through with these things tonight. I think a lot of the concerns that have been raised tonight, we can address at a site plan review, which is going to be farther down the line.
Other final comments?
Yeah, I guess I got a question. So looking at field one on the bottom there, you know, it's, the left field is right into the parking lot of Oakstone. You know, and I guess, why don't we rotate? I mean, if, if, if we don't think it's going to be at risk, there's going to be a fence or something there? I mean, obviously, rotating that field 180 degrees would put the cars at risk to the north. And I know you said these, these outdoor fields are, are quintessential to the business proposition that we're talking about here. So how do we prevent that from impacting that? And then the other left field goes into lot one. So if you get some big hitters, they're, yeah, it's going to go right into your, right? So I know, I know they're important, but it's, it's, it's a tight site plan in that regard.
Yeah, I'd touch on that too. So that outfield area right by that point would have net there. So net that you, you can see through high enough that a 12-year-old or under won't hit it across that because these are smaller fields. So it's set up for softball and youth baseball, 12 and under. But we would have net there. And I had actually talked to the bar owner because I went there after the last planning commission, just to talk through what our vision was with the outside with volleyball, just so we were on the same page. And they actually understood what we were doing. And we're actually excited about what we were doing. So we discussed that net, but I'd also do the same thing to protect. But those are great ideas and great conditions that we can definitely add because I know it's a concern. I don't want somebody's car hit as well.
Yeah, it just takes one big hitter. My son was a lifeguard at the Bonona Pool. Same thing, they had, there's a ball diamond with left field goes right at the pool. Ball came over the net, hit him in the leg. Obviously, it hurt, but he didn't, he didn't have a serious injury. But if he took it to the head, I mean, it's just tight. And when I think about what I've experienced, nets are great, but it's, reduces the risk, doesn't eliminate it.
So Heidi, I appreciate, appreciate what you said about families. I was one who drove my child to Kiva and Middleton late at night during the winter. So I get it, like I get the need. But I, I've obviously voiced my emergency services concerns, particularly if we have police and fire agreeing on something with those entrances, I think we should really listen to that. And I think, and I, and I feel bad for you because I know you've obviously done your homework on this. But I think from a procedural standpoint, I know it's not required in our ordinances to come with a concept plan. But I think with a development this size, this really would have been helpful to flush out before we got to the point of having a public hearing and having it before the board within 18 days. And so perhaps we look at that in the future and especially when it's an annexation. I think we need to have some type of annexation checklist, right? So we know the, the full cost of things. Yet we have the idea of the generated tax revenue, but what are the other implications? The plowing of roads? How many times is EMS going to be out there? Like those kind of things. I feel like we need to have better mechanisms on the front end of those things. And obviously, I know we said, well, we'll work out the details later. Will we though? And, you know, when, when we annex property and it's already zoned for that use, like, I mean, we're kind of down a path already. Like I would prefer before we annex property to have a better plan in place for the traffic flow and all the things that were mentioned. I didn't mention it, but one of the thoughts that I had that I think we should talk about is extending East Gaston further on down and connecting to the end of Commerce. It's scary to me, again, from an emergency standpoint, to just have the entryway come on to Herb Road. If you go to Oakstone right now on a Monday night, people are parked up and down that road. They're parked all down Commerce because they've got bags and trivia and volleyball all going on. So there is going to be congestion. And that's why I would like to see other outlets for, again, I know it's probably, we don't ever want an emergency situation to happen there, right? It's, it's the worst case scenario. And yet, for me, if we haven't done our due diligence, making sure that that area is safe for people and something does happen in a mass situation, I, I won't be able to live with myself. So that's where I'm at.
So I think that's feedback for you and perhaps for our engineer and staff to, when we start working on site plans for this area to, to consider.
Yeah, that's exactly, like the, we've made modifications in other areas of the village as things have grown to have no parking in certain areas. And maybe we need to do that for a turn radius. So, you know, that could be part of, you know, the first time we see something is always the first time we see something. And this is still like the opportunity where it's kind of just a concept. And he's going to take back, you know, all of our comments here and staff on things that we want to see in the, like, later approval. So, you know, while we don't have all the answers now, like now's the right time to say, these are our concerns and we want them addressed when you come back with the final site plan. Or we're going to make them conditions of the final site plan because that's how we feel that it needs to develop. So like this is the, this is the time to say, these are the things that we want to see at the final approval.
Can we, Rick, can we do that as part of this process before the annexation? Can we require these things?
So we have a lot of discretion at this point in time because it's a legislative decision to bring it in. I think the, the tricky part is like if you attach conditions to an annexation, like once it's annexed, it's annexed. So it, it's in. So it, the, like, I would either make the conditions on the conditional use permit or on the site plan when that comes through, if there are conditions. So like with the fire and EMS access, like as part of the site plan application, that always gets sent to fire and EMS for their review to provide comments on site layout and their access and turning radius and things like that. So, and like even on the public improvement side of things, like I mentioned before, we could put a condition on the conditional use permit that the developer must install public improvements necessary to serve the, the development. So then, when that comes back, we'll have a development agreement that lays all that out and will be part of the site plan approval process.
Yeah, I feel like those are good collaborative means to allowing you to go forward with purchasing the property and, and working through, and putting efforts then into a full site plan. Is there, are there any more questions or comments for the applicant? Yes.
So I appreciate all the feedback on everything. And just to kind of talk about the timing and when we started this process, it was in February. And then I took the time to meet with planning before I even, you know, put an offer in on that land. As we move forward and, you know, if there's delays to it, so if we don't start this fall, I got to wait another fall to start. Timing of a facility like this is everything. And opening in fall before the winter months is everything for the business. I get that you need information, but I know that's part of the process. And you can, you know, talk about what you need me to do moving forward. But, you know, if it is denied at this point or at this time, it, it'll potentially delay that project and move it into a different year. So, and I, I don't mean, I'm not trying to influence anything by any means, but I just know that, you know, going through this process before, you can put whatever you want on it if it's conditional use. And if you say, I got to do all this stuff, I might turn away then, but at least, you know, that process can, can continue. So.
I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate that you've been working on it. And, you know, you have been working on it since February, but the village board didn't actually see this, this rendering until 18 days ago. And so that's where I'm talking about our internal process and understanding that just being briefed about generally, there's a, a developer looking to build a sports complex and then seeing that it's 32 acres and 915 parking stalls, that is a long way apart. And so, again, I'm sorry that, you know, we're at this point. I, I think maybe we could have headed this off had we seen a concept plan earlier, but I just feel there's too many unanswered questions right now.
So we do have discussing considers on the agenda tonight. One's for the annexation and the second is for the conditional use permit.
I would make motion to approve the annexation petition for the 30.326 acres from the town of Cottage Grove and 11.897 acres from town of Sun Prairie. The parcels listed in our agenda with, are there, there are staff, usually staff conditions?
The, I don't think the ordinance itself has any staff conditions. The staff conditions, I think, are tied to the CUP.
And the agreement?
The agreement was already approved. So that was, yeah.
All right, there's a motion.
A second.
All right, there's a motion by Murphy and a second by Stoa. Any more discussion on the annexation petition? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Obscene. Motion fails. Do we want to have additional discussion on any other thing for the annexation or give direction?
Yeah, I guess that's the question. Do you guys want this to come back to you? Because we have 120 days from the filing to approve it. So if there's interest in bringing it back, what information would you want to make a decision at that point?
Renee, you had mentioned additional information.
I addressed that with the, the streets, the bike paths. And I, I think Paula made a good point too. This is, I feel really bad for the developer because he's kind of crunched in a corner as we are. If, if we've only had 18 days to really look at this, I, I feel like this is an internal thing where we, as a board and facility with administration here, need to have a better defined process, as Paula mentioned, a checklist. So a developer isn't backed into a corner and we're not either.
So you'd like information about streak, streets and bike paths?
To begin with, yes.
Can you be a little bit more specific so staff have that direction on what exactly you're asking for?
I'm going to start with that right now. And I, I need to think. I feel like I'm really put on the spot here, which is fine. But I, I, I need to do a little bit more review. I realize that staff need direction, but I, what other feedback the board has, I think would be great, helpful.
Yeah, I think what I'd like to see is better understanding of completing the Gaston road loop. I honestly think that's a really important thing. We, we talked about as far as access, there's one little road in from the south with the magnitude of people that are potentially there. I think we need to understand that. Jurisdiction of the right of way, who owns what? What's the responsibility, not only for ongoing road maintenance as far as plowing, et cetera, but also repairs and what the upgrades need to be, what the cost of that is. And I think you need to know that. The other thing would be, I know you've said traffic's not a big deal. We're talking about 988 vehicles per day, second shift. We're turning over first shift at Amazon. We're bringing in second shift. So the PM impact on the intersection, we're talking about at Gaston and Commerce Parkway, I'd like to understand what is the traffic impact? What is, we need a traffic study there. If we're talking about 915 spots, potentially peak, if it's an evening during the week, when, if it's only weekends, it's a big, it's, it's a different story. But we still are going to have 24/7 at Amazon. So there's going to be a lot of incremental traffic that we talked about when we started. So those are the items that I would like much more clarity. And I think you need to understand what would be required if we went forward with this.
So I'm a little concerned about the, the realistic expectations then for bringing this information back, like a full traffic study, I think is not, it's not going to be realistic. But just want some general staff overview, like a memo of, you know, some considerations that could be put into a conditional or into a site plan considerations in the future or, I understand that, that getting a better idea of the jurisdiction and, and a little, maybe laid out a little bit better.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of investment in the roadways that either needs to be in the agreement and Erin needs to know about it, or we're going to have to know about. And there's ongoing repair costs or maintenance, road maintenance costs that we're going to pick up.
One comment I'll just make on the looping of Gaston, that there will be some really challenging feasibility issues there because I see, it just sort of dead ends right there. So the pavement actually extends further, but that's actually on private property right now. That's off the site we're talking about. And to, I guess, even if we were to say like, oh, it has come through their property, it would still have to loop down and go across other private property. So it just, there would be some really challenging feasibility issues with extending Gaston to, to loop down to Commerce Parkway.
And there, there's an airport there.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, the bigger thing-
It's also going to put some restrictions on what you can do.
Right. You have to, the runways have to be-
At least as an active airport, yeah.
Yeah, they have to be 200 yards away, right? So yes, that would be a factor in that. But I already looked into that as well.
So to be clear about the traffic for the Amazon TA, and I might have heard it wrong, Peter, it's not 20% more traffic on that roadway.
20% of the turnover is-
Yes, yes.
Microphone.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. That's, that's what you said, okay. I thought, I thought somebody said 20% more than the third of there, there today.
Of the Amazon.
Yeah, 20% of the Amazon.
Incremental.
Yep, incremental, you have it.
At the PDA.
Mm-hmm. So when you guys, just out of curiosity, somebody, well, we were mentioning roads and what roads have to, like, what he's proposing now, at least on this map, doesn't show that there'd be any new public roads. This is more of a question of what he's going to do on the existing roadways, correct? And then there is path that almost leads up to this. I think, Stoa, you, you, you made a comment, you can almost bike to this. There's probably some extensions of path into it, but it's, it's fairly in good proximity to this site. But you're talking about the existing roadways. Because everything that he's proposing is all private roadways on his site. Those would not be village-owned, the way I see the site plan now, unless, unless others here think that there needs to be a, an actual village street through the site, I guess.
My, my point was that I thought that we needed to do something with East Gaston because the outlet at number one on the map that's shown there goes to, I believe, goes to Herb Court, or Herb Road. And I am worried, if you look at that strip out of there, you've got 915 cars in that parking lot. And in a emergency situation, you have a lot of people filing into one place. So there needs to be access and ability for people to get, also get out of that immediate danger on East Gaston. That's my concern. And that's a lot of traffic for that little strip going on to Herb. I mean, that's right between Fortune Favors and Oakstone. So like, I think we just need some other plans. And for me, again, looking through the lens of emergency services and those emergency scenarios, I, I want that to be planned for.
And I think that's what we do at later stages. This is like really generic at this point because he doesn't want to invest the additional funds if there's not a desire for the, for the use. And when we met with him in February initially, we did offer up, you know, he, he, you know, we can't require it, it's not a requirement, but he could have come to, you know, to present a concept, but, you know, that wasn't what he chose to do. But it's still a, you know-
But it's still a, you know, this is still a sixty, sixty-day approval process. We're just, you know, in the middle of it.
So. Well, I don't feel to place that responsibility on the builder for him coming forward. That should be your responsibility and the board's responsibility as a whole.
So there are.
I'm I'm just saying, it's not a requi-, I mean, the the board can create an ordinance and or or just direct me to do that, and I'll do that in the future, but that's never been the, it's always been an option.
And that's why we're in the situation we are in with the police department, with other things, is because they're crammed down and.
Point of order.
Yeah, we're gonna move forward here. So the, uh, next Village Board meeting is on August fourth. We are now directed staff to bring information back on, um, jurisdiction of right-of-way for Gaston Road and how that would, um, play into the annexation. They can also provide us with some high-level overviews of different traffic, and perhaps fire and EMS would give their very brief, uh, they can look at the plans and maybe give a little bit of higher, um, feedback on, um, their initial, uh, response to this, um, type of development. Again, all of the things that we're talking about and we're bringing up are things that would be hashed out in a in a site plan with conditions. But I think that moving forward for tonight, um, we are going to kind of stop with the discussion and and not move forward with, we've already decided not to move forward with the annexation petition, so we don't have to move forward with the conditional use permits. Is there, are there other things that the Village Board would like to direct staff to do to bring back for the August fourth board meeting so that we can consider these items?
I'm extremely frustrated that we are, try to say that we're a business-friendly community, yet we're putting up roadblocks and saying our process isn't being followed when our process is being followed. We are, we are creating a hostile environment for businesses to come forward in Cottage Grove. We have a development.
I thought we were done with this conversation.
All right, we're moving on. Um, thank you for your time tonight. We're gonna move on to discuss and consider the request from David Zelkey for an approved thousand four hundred and seventy-six square foot multi-tenant commercial building to be located at six forty Court Crossing. Um, this is an eight-tenant commercial building. The site plan is different from what the previous Village Board has seen before, so it's a revised project plan. Um, office, warehouse, workhouse space, um, workspace. Um, it's consistent with the land use chapter of the comp plan. Um, it's going, uh, we gave feedback at the Plan Commission to be designed similar to New Tech and First Choice Dental with a little bit higher-end finishings, um, and the applicant was very willing to entertain that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron if you have anything else to add on this agenda item.
Yeah, you basically addressed it. Um, the facade improvements were just, um, some improvements to the materials. They're using the height and configuration of the riff lines and things like that to, um, make it a little bit less industrial-looking from the main streets.
All right, comments or questions on this, um, request?
Yeah, I have a question for Aaron. Um, I'm curious the process for saying whether or not this, um, complies with the comp plan, 'cause looking at the plan, this is a planned mixed-use area. And looking at the comp plan, it's, uh, you know, planned mixed-use is intended as a vibrant urban place that should function as a community gathering spot, walking relationship between uses, minimal front setbacks, buildings and sites designed for pedestrians, parking lots located on streets, terear of buildings and in structures where possible. I I don't really have an issue with the building. I'm just, I don't really like the parking lot being in the front. And I know, um, Heidi spoke in a Plan Commission about this being sort of a facade of the village as you come in. And personally, I would prefer the facade to be a building and not a parking lot, so I'm just curious how that decision has come by.
Yeah, it's a little tricky with this building type, 'cause each unit kind of has a front and a back, like the front door that goes into an office area and then a back door with the overhead door. If you put the parking to the interior of the lot, then you're gonna have your front door and your, kind of both access in the back and then what's on the front. Yeah, it's just a little tricky to do that with this particular building type.
Okay, thank you. Um, my other concern, and this is only tangential in the related, but it's a planned mixed-use area, and we've got two that are currently there and two that are planned, none of which which are actually mixed-use. I'm not gonna say no to this project, 'cause I don't wanna send it back to change it to mixed-use, but I think going forward, we should have more consideration for mixed-use, um, buildings. 'Cause I'm I'm worried if we keep having a setback building with a a parking lot, we're gonna end up having a wide road that's lined with parking lots all the way down, which makes it really hard to to, we've already talked about how hard it is to cross a road. If we add another, you know, fifty feet of green space and sidewalks and and parking lot, it's gonna be really, really hard to walk around there. So I would like in the future to 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 keep that in mind. And I don't wanna get too off-topic, so I'm gonna leave it there for now.
Other comments about this request?
Um, I just wanted to follow up on the condition. We talked about a Plan Commission with, uh, building materials. Did they bring forward any new concepts since Plan Commission or?
Not yet, no.
Okay, 'cause I I do think that it's important that since, you know, this isn't an industrial park. It is our, you know, gateway into the village from the west. So I think that those, um, higher building materials, um, and just that, you know, I called it the main street vision was being, you know, withheld in that area.
I mean, it it can be tabled if you wanna see the revisions.
How many spaces are there, units are there for, uh, com-, uh, businesses?
Eight.
Eight? Okay.
Up to eight, it could be divided differently.
Any other comments?
Are the people that, I don't see them online, the people who are proposing this?
I don't think he's here tonight.
Okay, I I know you talked at Plan Commission about an incubator space. You know, I didn't, and I didn't catch if that was all or part business incubator. Do you remember that conversation from Plan Commission?
Yeah, I think that it was part of the the draw of this this development is that it could serve as that type of space for business, smaller businesses that are kind of looking to, um, establish their footing here in Cottage Grove and then maybe, um, move into bigger and better things.
Okay, I, the reason I ask is just more so for resources for them, um, because incubator space is tough, right? Like, and we, there's a lot of different, um, groups that we work with in Madison Starting Block, whatever, that serve as those incubator spaces. So I, you know, just wouldn't want them to have this pie in the sky idea and not have something to kind of help them with that because, you know, I would hate for those to sit empty, so.
Well, and on that, I think, um, when New Tech was kind of redeveloped or like, didn't become New Tech, like, those are now marketed as incubator spaces and are having a ti- hard time being rented. So to have another building that's trying to do the same concept right next door is, you know, I don't know about that. I'm also not the business owner.
I'd say that's a business owner decision.
So I guess I had a question. So the southwest three units really have no service access? So I'm assuming there's like, there's like an egress hallway? Is that how they're gonna get deliveries from the backside? It's just kind of kind of choppy. Now, again, it's up to the developer. It's just, I'm assuming, well, he's not able to a- answer questions, but I'm assuming that's what it is. When I look at that, is that going to be a one-way, meaning it'll be a secured door, so that's just an emergency out? I, you guys don't have the drawing up. It was in the packet.
I don't have the answer for you from Plan Commission. I don't know if Aaron, if you have any inside.
I don't know for sure on the interior configuration. I know he envisioned the the front-facing buildings and the build, the units facing Cottage Grove Road as more of a retail office service type as opposed to more of the flex along Court Crossing.
It's just interesting, there's, uh, five of the units have roll-up doors for service of, I don't know what 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 type of businesses would be in there. The other question I had is, does, is there, um, twenty-five percent or two or three of these units that are leased up? I'd hate to to go with a full-spec building right there on Cottage Grove Road. We've got the New Tech building now is vacant, it's for lease. We've got learning ladders for lease. I mean, there is space. All I can think of is where Princeton Club is now was vacant for like ten or twelve years. So, I mean, I'd like to see at least some traction with with the project before we build a big vacant building on spec.
With some of these unanswered questions, then maybe we should postpone action on this item. It seems like we're doing a lot of talking and there's not anyone here to make the answer, so, um, you know. I don't know if we need a motion to, can a motion to postpone?
Postpone.
I'd make a motion to postpone this item.
Second, a motion by Murphy, a second by Steveerson to postpone.
Just a, just a quick comment, um, just so you guys are aware, the previous, um, the previous concept from this owner, not that this has anything directly to do with the site plan, but, um, they had alluded to in the a previous board a couple of years ago, um, negotiated a TIF deal. They, you know, that has, you know, they would have to come back for that. They haven't necessarily alluded to that, but that's potentially something that they're, that they would need to bring forward as well, so just something to keep in the back of your mind.
All right, there's a motion and a second to table, um, bring back in the future agenda item and invite the applicants, please, if staff could reach out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obscene. Motion carries. Uh, we have then, we then discussed and considered a request from the Village of Cottage Grove Water Utility for approval of a site plan for the reconstruction of well number two, which is on Donna Street.
Basically, Kyla and Josh are the applicants here, um, so I'll let them take it away with the presentation of what they're looking at here.
We are in the process of designing well number two facility, which includes the demolition of the well itself and a rehab of the well hole, um, for well maintenance that is long overdue for both the facility and the well hole. Facility has, um, been flagged for probably the last at least six to ten years from our sanitary sewer survey from the DNR, meeting non-compliance. So in the packet is an overview of the site layout that meets all of our ordinances. The footprint's about the same, but it'll have additional chemical rooms, um, for the needs. And then Josh, if you wanna give a quick update, if there's any other questions?
Yeah, I could just give a brief overview. Um, not all of the members of the board have been through this process, you know, as it's developed, um, over the last couple of years. So in, in twenty-twenty-two, there's a master plan in the village for both the sewer and the water side. What came out on the water side was a skate update, and that's going on now so that all of the wells and the tower and and the communications at Public Works can kind of all talk and be monitored. Another big thing on the list was well number two, so you have three wells, um, number two, three, and four. One has been decommissioned years ago. Um, two has been around since nineteen seventy-two, uh, fifty-two years old. If I have that math right, maybe I'm, maybe that math's wrong. Fifty-two, fifty-three years old. And, you know, usually a well, you can get about a hundred, you can get about a hundred years out of it. So the well hole and the pumping capacity of it is is pretty good. They were gonna try to rehab the building, and we've looked into that a little bit, and I just wanted to scroll some through some of the pictures because at first you think, well, is there a way we can rehab this, this building? Um, do we need to to build a new one? I'm just looking through the pictures. The outside's pretty good, but when you get into the inside, that's where it becomes in in pretty rough shape. There's the well shaft and the well motor that comes down on it. Um, to the left of that picture is an engine, and that's the old generator. Doesn't operate anymore, isn't functional. The building doesn't have a generator that actually is hooked up to that well currently, um, today. The floor is in, starting to corrode and get into rough shape along with some of the return piping, um, as part of this. Some of the walls and the ceiling have water damage, um, to them. Also, the windows themselves, um, aren't very secure as you would secure a well, um, when you build a new one. Site security is a pretty big deal at well, so that it keeps people out, um, so there's no contamination at a well. And then, um, you know, HVAC has been a little tough in that building, just for, it was retrofitted later on. And then the big thing's the chemicals. So we got chlorine and fluoride in the building today. The DNR continues to report on not liking that situation. If you were to touch the building or you start to remodel it, they're gonna say those need to be separated. They need to be in their individual room. They corrode everything. They're a danger to people when they enter that building. It's something that you need to separate into two different confined areas. So in looking at all of this and 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 thinking about numbers, um, you know, you're five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand to kind of rehab and and get some of these things, um, in shape, or you're, you know, close to a million and a half to redo the whole thing and actually bring it up to snuff and 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 tear it all down. At the same time, it's been twenty years since they've done anything to the hole, which means they're gonna burst, they're gonna televise, they're gonna try to get some additional capacity out of that hole. It pumps around six hundred and fifty gallons a day. They should probably be able to get it back up to eight hundred, um, as part of this. So we're here to talk about the site plan side of it. Hold on, I gotta unshare and share just the site plan real quick. It's not being friendly now. And that is in your packets. My computer won't bring it up. Here we go. So it's the existing site plan, um, that's there as in this hatched mark. And then as you go down, the new one, um, takes place of the old. And the new one's built to a a size that we can fit the separate rooms in, but also meet all the setbacks. So the setbacks are met at the site. Our engineer was joking at the Utility Commission, that's about as small as you can get, but it's 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 it's, it still fits everything that needs to be fit in that location. So the overall plan looks like that. On the left side, you have the well, still the original well hole and the piping. And then on the right side, you have two separate rooms with two separate doors that lead to the outside for chlorine and fluoride as part of that well. And then I'm gonna scroll all the way to the bottom. Just the the look of the well is gonna match the other well facilities and and, um, some of the lift station looks throughout the village to keep it consistent. Aaron also set up a a landscaping plan that's in your packets as well that surrounds the entire site. And the generator for this building will be on the backside of the site outside. Is there any questions?
Yeah, questions or comments?
I would just ask, I don't have a question on the site plan, but, um, the document that you had with it, um, about, uh, the project manual. I noticed in there that it is subject to Davis Bacon. Why is that?
I reviewed that, um, since it was added in the packet. It was part of the sixty percent approval, and I went through that and had, um, comments regarding the specifications. It's not required for any fund of, we don't have any federal funding for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was it was default in there as as kind of a boiler, and we pulled that stuff out, yeah. Good question.
Anything else on this?
Make a motion to approve the request from Village of Cottage Grove Waterway Utility for the approval of site plan for reconstruction of well two located at two oh five Donna Street as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Murphy, a second by Dahl. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obscene. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the Library Board. The Library Board met on Wednesday, July sixteenth at six o'clock. We approved our minutes. We discussed programming and gave feedback to our new librarian on the July through December programming schedule, um, just highlighting some, uh, fun things that are happening. Um, Distillery continues, and there's an addition of an anonymous book recommendation list for Cottage Grove, which, if you know me, all of my book recommendations probably need to be anonymous. Summer Storytimes every Thursday morning, um, Playground Playdates at Glen Grove every Tuesday. Um, we are working on really consistent themed programming, um, so we think that repetition is key. The more, um, consistent, um, offerings that we have, the better, um, you know, the community gets to know us a little bit better. Um, we did receive an Alliant Energy steam programming grant, um, so we have quite a bit, um, a pretty heavy steam focus, and we always have the last couple of years. I'm so excited to look towards making some sensory tables or really kind of incorporate a little bit more, um, steam activities into the, um, into the fall routine. Um, we will be at Community Night Out and Back to School Nights, um, our programming cards will be ready by then, so we'll have those for those, um, those events. We don't have an August meeting because of Community Night Out, um, but our next meeting is September seventeenth at six PM. Our future agenda items included our twenty-twenty-six budget request as well as additional dungeon and dragon information, because none of us have any idea of what that, how that works. Unfortunately, did we have one person, um, in the audience who happens to be a dragon master, or whatever they're called, uh, and is really excited to start working with us, so we made some really good connections. Um, questions or comments for me on the Library Board? Otherwise, we'll move on to Deer Grove EMS Commission.
All right, we met on, uh, July seventeenth.
All right, we met on July 17th. We approved minutes from the prior meeting, we approved June financials, the bills, the write-offs. The remount of the ambulance was delivered last week, so it's gonna be going in for graphics, the wraps, that should be in service August 1st. And then one of the other ambulances, Mickey, is gonna be going in for bodywork once that new unit is in service. We got a couple of nice thank-yous in terms of correspondence. One from thanking for service, and then another one from Amy from the president, from the chamber, thanking for a presentation that Chief Lang had done. We discussed the vehicle replacement, there was a request by chief to, to replace the existing vehicle. We did not take any action on that. There was really no update on the collective bargaining, other than the group is going to meet again on the 24th. We talked about 2026 operating budget, chief doesn't see a big increase, but we plan to discuss that next month. And of course, agenda items, we talked about staffing for 2026, the LRP, and then talking about a, some sort of educational incentive for the volunteer members. So, other than that, when we close the meeting, I don't know, Paula, if there were other items?
And I know chief is online too, if he has anything else to add. Otherwise, comments or questions for EMS?
I have nothing to add, Pete gave a great summary.
All right. Then we will move on to reports from village officers, village attorney.
Nothing to report tonight.
Excellent. Communications and miscellaneous business, first up is the consider of the approval of the vouchers. The bills list is linked in the agenda.
Just a comment, I had met with Cameron on Friday, and he was concerned that we'd be concerned about the dollar amount of the vouchers, and so he basically said, just be sure to, you know, let them know that there's a lot of TID payments that are coming out, so don't be alarmed by the dollar amount. Correct.
And if anyone ever has any questions about the bills list, you can always email Cameron or call him, and he'll give you all the information, probably more, a little extra information too.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
Motion by Murphy, second by Severson. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence, we had three emails come in, two about the Miracle League and then one about the indoor sports complex. You received all of those emails. There, also the, all of the comments were forwarded to the village board about, from the public hearing at the plan commission as well, which included several emails in. Does anyone else have anything for correspondence? Upcoming community events.
The Cottage Grove Lions Club sponsors our community-wide, community-wide garage sales, which is the first full weekend in August, starting July 31st, actually. And then the Cottage Grove Area Historical Society has a Brot feed on Friday, August 1st in the area between Bakers Creek and Pigly Wiggly.
All right, thank you. Future agenda items, we have a couple that came up through the, through the meeting, and then we'll have probably, there was a legal one for next time.
Yeah, there is a discontinuance of a portion of Fundamental Way, so this is next to payday. There was a petition from DJ's and property owners that, to discontinue it as part of the prior approvals for the projects, that will be coming. The only reason it didn't come this time is there's a certain amount of time that has to pass from public notice being given for it.
Matt?
And then likely two closed sessions, one, our labor attorney will be coming to give a overview of kind of a kickoff before we start negotiations with the police union and get some direction from the board on, on that. And then possibly a term sheet for the ongoing Coil South TID 8 developments that Attorney Conopacky will be presenting to the board for feedback.
Does anyone else have agenda items that they'd like to bring up?
Yeah, I have a presentation request about development. Like, there was a community kind of village page that talked about development process and the different develop, like, I feel like maybe there's a disconnect on what the process is and what our expectations are, and I want to make sure that we're aligned on that. So I think if we have a presentation on, you know, comp plans and plan commission and board and like how that process works, then we can better have things, like our expectations and the process align. So I think if we start with a presentation, and maybe that's part legal, part planning, like, so we can all be on the same page, because I think it would be very beneficial if that happened.
I'd second that and add that maybe that gives the board an opportunity then to, I know we talked a little bit maybe about realigning, you know, our expectations or bringing things forward or having a checklist, and that gives us maybe the, a little bit more open dialogue to have that conversation. I'm not sure if two weeks, when is our next meeting? August 4th is a realistic expectation to have that kind of presentation and that level of discussion. Maybe the second meeting in August is a better.
Yeah, it might have to be something that we break up into pieces. It's a very, I could talk for hours. I mean, if you guys want to be here till two in the morning, we can do that. So.
It's Heidi's fault.
But we can certainly like, maybe break it into chunks of digestible information. So, yeah, we'll plan on having that in the future.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, any other future agenda items? Otherwise, we have a closed session for the reimbursement of property damage during a police squad accident. So I'll make the motion that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 per N G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved and/or per N E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining sessions require a closed session. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Murphy, roll call vote.
Benzo?
Aye.
Dahl?
Aye.
Cal Nelson?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
And Stoa?